This is a meeting of the planning board on Monday, December 11th. We have a agenda. There's been a request to flip two from the same office. What are they, Mary Ann? Oh, seventy-five under public hearings. Seventy-five seventeen and seventy-five, seventy-eight seventeen. They're going to flip the order. Any problem with that, guys? And one other is not being heard tonight. It was on the agenda and it shouldn't have been. Which is, trying to find it now. Eighty-seven seventeen. Yeah, that's not supposed to be on here, so that will not be heard tonight. It's going over to January. I can't find it on here, but it's on here somewhere.
Yeah, it's page eighty-six.
So that's going to January.
That's going to January. Okay, somebody want to make a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okey dokey. Okay. We have minutes. Catherine, are they ready to go?
Yes, just, uh... November twenty-seventh, November seventeenth, and November thirteenth.
Okay, November thirteenth, sixteen, and twenty-seven. Any corrections or comments?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then we have A and Rs. Ratification of the first one. And then we have Mason, eight Equator Drive, secondary lot. Nantucket School of Design, this is the subdivision down there in Washington. Town of Nantucket, Madakasham Valley. Joseph Vacanti. Susan Treasi, fifty-six Pochuk. Nantucket Island Land Bank Pilot Whale. Nantucket Island Land Bank Pilot Whale. Bird's Nest Trust Peacock Trustee, three Matickett Road. David and Janne Visco, four Rachel Drive. And Patrick McGoyne and Geraldine Walker, five Rachel Drive. Anybody have any, um...
Yeah, I can't vote on two Rachels.
Joe has to recuse from eight Equator, which is eighty-one seventy-nine.
And fifty-four, fifty-six Hummock. I couldn't see that.
Okay, fifty-six Hummock.
And the two Rachel Drives.
And two of the Rachel Drives. Eighty-one eighty-six, eighty-one eighty-seven. And what's the number of the other one?
Eighty-one seventy-seven and eighty-one seventy-nine.
Catherine, did you get that? Seventy-seven and seven... Catherine? Dave? Catherine? Joe has to recuse from eighty-one seventy-seven Sullivan. Eighty-one seventy-nine Mason. And the two Rachels, which is when?
Eighty-one eighty-six and eighty-one eighty-seven.
Okay, so we're down to four. Anybody have any comments on these? Somebody want to make a motion to endorse them?
Motion to endorse as submitted, with also noting that on eighty-one seventy-seven, we're ratifying that vote.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Joe recused from all of them. Catherine rather than have to do them one at a time? Yeah, because otherwise we'd take them all at one time. Secondary dwellings. Holly, is there anything weird going on in here?
The thirties.
Um, I was sort of wondering about the parking.
Which one?
Which one?
I don't know, I got it in ten minutes.
I can't sit on twelve skyline. Appleton maybe?
Uh, I'm not sure. Maybe Appleton.
You want me to pull that one?
Yeah.
This one?
No, uh, Old Mill Court.
Oh, always an issue. This is the one at the very end of the Old Mill Court. It drives right into it. Yes, we've been holding on to this because we've been waiting for the erosion mitigation.
I understand.
Go to the, do they have a plan? As long as they meet the ground, as long as they meet it. And they've got twenty-four feet in between. Basically all they need.
It doesn't look like twenty, doesn't look like twenty-four yet.
Well, they'll have to meet it, otherwise Marcus won't pass them.
Okay. I'm still going to vote against some of them.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? All right, I'm going to take G.G. Development Vernon and Carol Mason, Mattson, thirty Tajman. Andrea and Donald Giraud, twenty-five Hummock Pond, Stephen Welch. Thirteen Waydale, Frank Kovak, forty-eight Appleton, and Christopher Wenzicki, thirteen Equator. I'm going to leave out the one I can't sit on. Somebody want to make a motion per staff comments?
Make that motion.
No, I actually wanted to vote against some of them.
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, so you want to do one at a time, Ed?
All right. G and G Development LLC, five Old Mill Court.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against that.
Okay, all in favor, someone want to make a motion per staff comments?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's four in favor. Joe, negative. Vernon and Carol Mattson, thirty Tajmalane.
Motion to approve.
Per staff comments?
Yes.
These are all per staff comments, Holly. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous, Catherine?
Yeah.
Okay, Andrea and Donald Giraud, twenty-five Hummock Pond Road.
Motion to approve as per staff recommendation.
Okay. Nat, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's a four to one, Catherine. Okay, Stephen Welch, thirteen Waydale Road. It's just an adjustment.
Yeah, motion to approve as per staff recommendation.
Is there a second, Nat? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, where are you? Joe, Waydale?
Good, yes.
All right, so five, zero, unanimous. Frank Kovak, forty-eight Appleton Road.
Motion to approve as per staff recommendation.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous, Catherine? Um, I'm going to have Barry take over at Lindbergh's.
Ed, within A and Re. E. Lindbergh, twelve skyline drive, a step to motion at this point.
Make that motion to approve.
Okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
Motion to approve being seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes happy unanimously with this motion to your decision.
Okay. Christopher Wenzicki, thirteen Equator Drive.
Motion to approve as per staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, that was a four to one, Catherine? Previous plans, Old South Road crossing. Holly, where do you want to go with this? Ed's here.
That one we're actually going to continue till January.
Okay.
Motion to continue, January eighth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, what about Woodbury?
You've seen the staff report, um, there have been lots removed, this will vary subsequently from the eighties, um, that have...
These drainage easements, yeah.
Within drainage easements, the adjacent drain features, which are lots. This is another lot. As you can see, I've listed all the ones that have been approved. And I go, we...
Well, somebody want to make a motion to approve this?
Motion. Go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead.
Also, as has come to our attention this afternoon, which I don't know if I answered that, I apologize. But Mr. Cormack, Collier from the Land Council has, um, basically asked staff to, um, look into where there are all these, um, conservation easements stand, if there's any encroachments that happened since the eighties.
Okay.
Obviously, we've got that at the last hour, so it's not something we can do, but we also feel that this is a separate matter.
Yep.
That if that's something that you want us to look into, we will definitely do that. You can also put it back on the agenda as a previous.
Fine, some other time. Barry, you going to make a motion to approve?
I'm going to make a motion to approve as per staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's four in favor, one opposed. Same thing with the next one. Somebody want to make that motion?
Motion to approve.
Oh, it's reversed, Catherine. He made the motion and he seconded it.
Just to keep it interesting.
Keep her awake. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Joe? Okay, so Joe is opposed to both of those. Clay Street subdivision. Peter Keiberg was going to be here. Let's pass that over for now. I told him it was going to go very quickly. All right, we'll pass that one. So we'll hold on to Clay Street. Okay, two down, one to go. LLC Sophie's Way, twenty-one Pilgrim Road. Staff recommends endorsement of the plans and all documents. We've already seen this before. Does somebody want to make a motion on that one?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nat seconded. Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. Stephen Welch again, another adjustment. So we want to make that motion, or Holly, are we okay with this now? Okay.
Second.
So do we need...
Barry made a motion, Nat seconded.
Do we need to make a motion? It's a minor modification.
Yeah, somebody want to make a motion that it's a minor mod first?
That will be my motion then.
Okay, Nat seconded. All those in favor of that?
Aye.
It was unanimous. Okay, now make the motion.
So moved. To accept your...
Barry made a motion to accept it. Nat, you seconded it?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that was two motions.
So I'm going to sit this next one out, twenty-nine seventy-nine.
Cedar Crest?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that'll be true for the Meadows too.
Okay. All right, we're now down on Cedar Crest one, and Meadows two, and Sandpiper one and two. It was a little confusing. Is somebody talking, Dave? We keep getting pawns at the last minute. You know how much that really irritates us. Because it wasn't anticipated by the chair forty-eight hours in advance either. So we're getting a little tired of getting stuff at the last minute that we have to try to figure out. Let's keep, this has been going on for two years. Let's not keep going with that. Because otherwise it won't come in, it'll go off to the next meeting, Holly.
Understood. We were just trying to hit a year-end deadline here.
I know.
And this is plan, these are plans that the board has seen multiple times, and these are staff-initiated changes, not applicant-initiated changes, but your point is well-taken and understood. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board members. Dave Arminetti, Richmond Company and Richmond Great Point Development. The first item of ours this evening is this requested Form J release for four of the remaining Evergreen Way lots within the Cedar Crest one subdivision. At your last month's meeting, you released three of the lots, which constituted seventy-five percent of the area involved. And there was a little bit of confusion due to the prior engineering, um, before we purchased the property. The Shugru plans that were, constituted the Cedar Crest one and Cedar Crest three subdivisions were co-mingled a little bit. And that led to Mr. Pesci's letter back in two thousand and eight with a punch list being co-mingled a little bit. So the Cedar Crest one punch list was co-mingled a little bit with the Cedar Crest three punch list. All we're talking about is requesting release of the four remaining lots in the Cedar Crest one subdivision, which is further to the south on the Evergreen Way area, not the Daffodil Mayflower lots, and the extension of Evergreen Way that goes further north towards Old South Road. And, uh, there was a little confusion at last month's meeting, so I think prudently, the staff recommended that some of the lots be released, the remainder be retained. And in the intervening month, we've been able to clarify with the staff and with Mr. Pesci. Everybody's on the same page that the only remaining punch list items outstanding from the town staff review and from our engineers' confirmatory review by Hays Engineering is the planting of twelve street trees along Evergreen Way, which we're more than happy to do. We don't think it's most appropriate to try and plant those in the winter, even though it's been fairly mild. So what we talked about with the staff, and I believe they're very comfortable reviewing and recommending, is we'll put up a $10,000 surety bond in cash, which covers one and a half times the estimated amount of the trees that Mr. Pesci estimated with a little bit of additional cushion. And we'll agree to plant the trees on or before Memorial Day of two thousand and eighteen, secured by the $10,000 cash surety. And that's the consensus we reached with the staff over the last couple of weeks. So we'd be requesting release of the remaining four lots, which are numbered on the plan that Holly has up on the screen, being from right to left, nine oh-three, nine oh-four, nine oh-five, and nine oh-six. And the town still will have full surety for the entirety of the larger lot behind, which is shown as Lot C or Land Court Plan Lot nine oh-nine here, which is part of the Sandpiper, the new Sandpiper subdivision.
I understand.
So we apologize for the confusion, which went back half a decade or so, but I think we've got it all cleared up now.
We also understand that you all had a com-fab this morning or this afternoon, so everybody's on the same page. Leslie?
We would respectfully request release of those remaining four lots, and we will, uh, confirm the planting of those trees on or before Memorial Day.
Okay, Leslie?
We all did meet to talk about that, and we agree that that's a reasonable approach, and we recommend endorsement of the Form J.
Okay. Any questions from the board? If we beat this one to death. Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the request.
Is there a second?
Is that good enough? Or staff recommendation?
Well, it's just a Form J. Is there a second?
Second.
John seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and what's going on with Meadows two and Sandpiper one and three?
So the next item, Madam Chairman, may well be better explained by Mr. Pesci, who, as always, could probably be a little more concise than I can usually be, but I'll be glad to jump in whenever appropriate.
And this, just to be clear, this was not anticipated by me within forty-eight hours of the meeting. So it will be on the agenda in January to ratify whatever vote is taken today.
Okay, um, for the record, Madam Chairman, Ed Pesci of Pesci Engineering, representing the planning board tonight. On Wednesday, we met with Mr. Arminetti, and we also met with Rob McNeil, DPW Director, and Mike Burns, a transportation planner in Plus Department, along with Dave and one of his other project managers, Brian Wallace, and Patty Rugavine. We actually sat around the table and went over, thank you, Holly, at length, this thirty-four sheet, plus five or six from Hays. A number of things, I actually got them on Wednesday. At the meeting, we got an updated version and some drainage calculations, so I could take a quick analysis of that. Finished the analysis and wrote a report on Thursday night and sent it out. Mr. McNeil wanted to sign an endorsement at the bottom of them, so there's some emails running around that has his signature block at the bottom. He unfortunately left to go on vacation, said that Chuck Larson could sign for him, but he didn't have any problem with it. In a nutshell, Holly, why don't you go to sheet twelve or thirteen? There, stop right there. So there's a number of areas here that, um, did any, does anyone have a pointer, electronic pointer?
Actually, if I could, there's a color exhibit that I gave to Holly this evening that's on the thumbstick that'll actually illustrate, I think, what you're about to talk about a lot easier.
So the purpose of the meeting was to go over the, the number of comments we received from staff, from the board, from the public, on the wide, and from DPW about widening of Old South Road. This is kind of an important thing, because it's going to be the entrance to the site. The current, just to orient you all, the current entrance on Greglin, I believe, is right here. Dave, is that correct? And this is the new Old South Road entrance, which will be Ironwood Drive. And so there is a number of improvements. I don't know, do you have a plan showing the left of this, to the left of this, or is this the first sheet, Dave?
Uh, that's the only one we had colored up.
Okay, so just off-screen here is Lover's Lane, just to get you oriented. So there's a striped, a striped median, and then after the entrance to the retail liner building area, there is a widening of Old South Road. The widening is intended to provide a separated lane and a mountable shoulder in the event emergency vehicles will have to get around traffic here. But the widening is all on the Old South Road side, so it's not obviously impacting anybody to the north. So all the widening is on the Richmond property area. So it is widening on both shoulders, both sides, and a number of traffic improvements with regard to vehicle lane marking and turning lanes and signs. Did you continue on down the road with this, or is this it?
No, this just focuses on the center where the GeoGrid grass shoulders were substituted for the asphalt.
So there's a grass paved system. It's a, it's a porous, structural porous pavement system that grass grows up through it. It's a gravel-based mat, and there's actually a polyethylene mat the gravel sits on, and then the grass is grown, grows on top of it. It's used in many areas. And this is an area that allows a little less pervious material, a little less runoff and so on. One of the, one of the things that the DPW Director wanted to do is keep the original drainage design that was pervious, that was, excuse me, impervious, was asphalt, and Richmond had agreed to do that. So essentially, Madam Chairman, I put together a comment letter saying, "We recommend, after looking at all this and after discussing this, we recommend endorsement," so that this could prefer, I guess, move forward, subject to a condition that they address all of the items in this letter. And both Mr. Wallace and Mr. Arminetti agreed to all of those conditions. So we, I circulated amongst the group, so it wouldn't be a surprise to anyone. Gave it to, again, Mike Burns and to, um, to Rob McNeil, so that everyone could have beyond the same pages exactly what, what was being proposed. So items such as the crossings, the crosswalk crossings, will comply with a standard that DPW wants us to use going forward. This sidewalk right here terminates on this plan, but on other plans that I'm reviewing with Richmond Group, it continues on, crosses the entrance to retail liner buildings, and there's a, there's an actual crossing right here that continues on Sandpiper. So I wanted to make sure a number of things get coordinated, a number of things get looked at, and all of that, they've agreed to. So if you were of the intention here of, uh, trying to move this forward with a vote, you had that opportunity. If you'd like to wait till January, you can do that as well. So there's a number of little technical issues that need to be resolved. I'd like to point out, one of them, though, that I think is important for the board just to remember or to understand. And, um, Dave, what's the, what's the sheet up at Macy's Lane? Is that fourteen?
Uh, I believe so. I think it goes eleven, or thirteen, eleven, twelve, thirteen. There you go.
Right, so...
Just skipped over it.
So, um, this is the, this is Macy's Lane, Old South Road, Macy's Lane heading to the airport, and there's a widening of the paved area and a dedicated turn lane. One of the concerns I had was that the actual stop line over here was too far away from the intersection to see down Macy's Lane, because this is all obstructed with vegetation. And then Mr. Burns described to me a previous plan that you all had looked at, that actually it looked like, I guess, Tetra Tech had looked at a channelized island there. And that is still on the table. So part of my notes here, my letter today, this week, last week, does mention that that channelized island is the preferred option, that the Plus Department has actually been in, in contact with the property owner here to arrange for a land swap to allow that to happen, because the channelized island would require...
His attorney was just here. He's probably in the hallway? Yeah.
That that channelized island would require approximately three hundred square feet from the corner. And while the applicant here, Richmond Group, does not control that, can't control that, that decision, they're willing to work with us and defer any of this improvement until that's finalized. Could take a few, could take a few weeks.
Ed, the turning lane at Macy's is Peter's client, and we have been working, he'll tell you that we have been working with them, but he'll give you the status of it right now? Do you have the status of it? We, we gone anywhere with Walter?
Yeah, Walter is all aboard.
Microphone.
Peter Keiberg, for the record, attorney for Walter Galakia on this matter. He is all for the plan, and we are at the point right now with the town and with the engineers working on it, where we're just looking for how committed everybody is to it. Which, of course, you know, I understand we can't really go that far until we get a town approval.
We have to go to town meeting.
I'm not project right, but we're, you know, we're all aboard.
Okay, thanks. And we'll come back to your matter now that you're here. I told you we were going to move fast.
One other item I want the board to know, and is of particular interest when I do reviews, is that I want the fire department to look at things like this. This is obviously an important thing for them in the future. And the fire chief, they had a meeting that Wednesday prior to my technical review meeting with the team, Richmond team, and the town staff, and a meeting with the fire chief, and the fire chief had approved, approved the actual design. So, um, I, I think we're, we're there, with the exception of a few technical issues, small technical issues that they can address in revised plans. So these are, are meant to be draft plans on Wednesday for the review, and to have my, my analysis and take a look at it. It's, it was a lot to do right away, but we got it done, and, um, as I said, we recommend, if the board so desires, and at your discretion you want to move forward, you could vote to approve it, subject to complying with the conditions of my report.
Leslie, was this part of being everybody on the same page this afternoon at the meeting?
Yes, and we recommend that you accept these plans.
Okay, any board members have any comments?
Yeah, when we accept these plans, what does that mean?
It's my understanding from Ed and from Mike Burns and from the DPW that everyone wanted the planning boards essentially buy-in on these plans before moving forward.
So we're not endorsing anything?
I guess you could endorse the plans. There's no reason why you couldn't.
You could.
Barry's trying to represent you.
These plans and improvements in Old South Road are a condition of Meadows two and Sandpiper one and two.
Already in the decision.
In your decision, so there's no reason why you couldn't do that. You can certainly endorse them. You can put an endorsement stamp on here, and you could do that.
Are the plans going to change?
The only plan that's going to change, and, and we won't know that until we move forward, is this one at Macy's Lane. They still have to address those. So it's an either or. It's alternative one or alternative two. They could add that sheet, and that would be a complete set, and then they'd only execute it after they get direction from the planning board and staff. So that's a good way to handle it. I don't know, Dave, does that sound agreeable to you?
Yeah, if I could, Madam Chairman, through you. The board doesn't have to sign these technically. It's really the board of selectmen acting as the board accounting commissioners that has to accept the gift of these improvements. That's the formal step that has to happen. But given that your board had seen these back in August and September before the staff changes were proposed, and they are an integral part of our overall project approvals, we felt incumbent upon ourselves to bring it back to your board to make sure you saw the changes and understood them. But technically, it's the board accounting commissioners that has to formally approve these. But I think it would be a good, a good sign for the board, if you want to take that step to endorse these, even if it's not legally necessary. I'm sure the board of selectmen acting as the board accounting commissioners is going to want to hear from a representative, probably not just of the staff, but of the board, the planning board, when we go before them. And I will digress for a quick second, Madam Chairman, and apologize. That's one of the reasons why we're trying to move this forward, is after several months of corralling a lot of these comments from the staff, which were very positive and, I think, very productive, as Ed mentioned. There's considerably less impervious area. Aesthetically, it's going to be a little more pleasing. It's still going to have the channeling effect that asphalt paved shoulders would have. So it's stuff that we were all more than willing to do, and the consensus kind of finally came forward in the last couple of weeks. And we thought, this is your last meeting of the year. We'd like to get to the board accounting commissioners in mid-January if we can, to move this forward so that we can even get in the ground in February and March and meet the blackout date of next spring. So that's the intent, is to try and move this forward, to get the improvement in the ground. We have the funding, we have the wherewithal, we know everybody, not just us, but everybody who drives the road wants to see this improved as soon as possible, so that was the objective. So we do apologize, and we appreciate your indulgence.
Anybody else? Not a public hearing, Leslie, we just keep going.
So you want, um, we don't sign them, but we...
Just make a motion to endorse, we endorse the plans.
Yeah, okay, so I'll make a motion to endorse the plans with Ed's comments and the island. Should I mention that, Ed?
No.
Preferred.
Preferred.
If, if land becomes available.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. For all those who came in late, I see some of you in the audience. We've already done all the A and Rs and all the secondary dwellings. So if you're here for an A and R at the beginning of the agenda or secondary dwellings, they've all been approved. All the previous plans, all the previous plans have been approved. Now we're backing up to, where'd he go?
Old South Road. Old South Road.
Come on down.
We're going to-
We went past you, Clay Street subdivision, which I know some people are here for.
8038.
Because we're going 8038 Clay Street, that's where we are now, Peter, you're up.
Okay.
What? You're just hanging?
Again, for the record, Madam Chairman, Attorney Peter Kiberg for KRE Realty Trust. I don't have much to say on that, I wasn't even aware that there was a hearing, I was never invited to it, and I came down pretty much to listen to see what's going on, because I really honestly don't know yet.
Well, explain, explain about the, about the road situation, because when it became an airplane, an airplane strip, is when we started getting the phone calls.
Right.
You need to explain what happened.
Right, so there's a, a couple things in the process of opening up the area where Clay Street is, you know, first, I'd like to point out, though, that we're aware of the Planning Board requirements having to do with Clay Street as a condition for approval of the subdivision. Part of the requirements are, of installing Clay Street is that it only be a 12-foot wide track, we're aware of that. There are other requirements, though, in opening up Clay Street, there are embankments, there's drainage, there's digging down underneath to give the road the proper base, so that when and if the town ever takes the road, that we've saved them work and saved everybody work. In order to do a lot of that activity, it's necessary to go out past the actual 12-foot track that will ultimately be installed, obviously, to install the berms and the drainage, possible utility lines, entrances and exits and so forth. We have no intention of opening up a 40-foot wide landing strip, but we do have the necessity of taking down some of the vegetation in the layout, and that's what we've done for the most part. There was, in the beginning, a surveying misunderstanding, we'll call it, that put us about four feet into the Fredrickson lot. We've spoken to them, and we'll do what we have to do to put them in the position they were before we did that. All that being said, though, I think it's kind of important that everybody realize that, you know, the vegetation that's in the Clay Street layout is poison ivy, brambles, underbrush, even the few trees that were there are pitch pines and likely to fall over by themselves. There's a couple of trees in there that were larger, that were actually in the layout that we had to take out. I'm not for, you know, making a landing strip or taking out trees, but nevertheless, it is a layout, it is a road layout, and I, you know, we took down a lot of bushes and a lot of poison ivy, it, it looks drastic, but there was nothing there, it was bushes, pitch pines, nothing, and we have no intention of making that track any wider than what you have told us to do, so.
Okay. I know there's some neighbors who have generated the concern, does anybody, any of the neighbors want to talk, or did Ed explain it to you? Identify yourself and where you live.
Marie Lemberg, 42 Skyline Drive.
Put this thing down right in front of you, there you go.
Better?
Yep.
We, we just have some concerns, and we're really yielding to, to you as the Planning Board, because you're in charge, obviously, of, of the approvals. And so it appeared to us, we weren't there at the time, the, the road was actually done, the driveway, rather, it appeared to us that it was much wider than it needed to be. And we, we were justifiably, I believe, upset, because through all those meetings that we came to, we were told it was going to be a 12-foot wide road. Now, it may be that it is 12-foot all the way, it appears to be much bigger, certainly at the beginning of the, of the road, and we're just concerned that it's no longer really in keeping with the neighborhood. And I also checked out the special permit, and you had waived berms and curbs. So I, I just don't know why it got to be so, but it doesn't matter, it is what it is. So now the question is, can something be done to perhaps give it a little more character of the neighborhood? And that's why we're here today, is to ask you, because you had stated in the decision that no landscaping was going to be necessary, because it was just going to be the 12-foot wide road, and now we have much more. So, so that's, that's really why we're here.
Okay.
If, you know, we leave that decision to you.
Thank you. I know Andrew went out there before he left.
He did, and I'm somewhat familiar with the current state of the property. And, you know, I think with all construction projects, I mean, there's some, you know, clearing at the beginning that's not consistent with, you know, what's going to be there when the project is over, and there's always some amount of, you know, excavation or overdig that's necessary in order to implement what is approved. So I think at this point, it's a little premature for the board to get too involved in what's going on, but I think definitely putting the property owner on notice that, you know, we will be monitoring it and making sure that they comply, and letting them know that it's important that they follow what the Planning Board approved, is important.
Which, and I remember we waived the berms, we're not looking for berms, Peter, you've mentioned that a couple of times, we're looking for just a simple track, 12 feet wide, that's more rural in character than sitting in the middle of a landing strip, and it may, because we're going to have to sign off on this, right, Leslie?
Yes.
It may behoove your client to plant stuff where they cleared.
No aversion to that?
Sure.
And Peter Kiberg, for the record, we have no aversion to that, that is our intention, we want it to look good, and again, while the clearing is wider than 12 feet, maybe even significantly wider than 12 feet, that, we understand that that track is 12 feet, and that it's to be planted on both sides, and it'll look nice when we're done.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yep.
While we have the property owner here, I just want to remind him of the construction inspection schedule that you have to follow that's in the subdivision regulations, so, you know, as you get to certain thresholds of construction, we'll need to have our engineer come out and perform the required inspections.
Thank you very much for reminding us.
Don't get all cute with swales and berms and stuff like that, that's not where we're headed out there.
Stay away from cute stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have any comments?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, we are into public hearings, Surfside Road Phase Two has been continued, seven Surfside, patents have been continued again. You're going to need to get extensions, because that's a little tight.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay, and Valero's is going off, but we gave them an extension for a year.
So we're jumping to Scarlet O'Hara?
So now we're going to Island Storage, 12 Bartlett Road, or did we switch? Mary Ann, we're going with Scarlet O'Hara?
Yes.
43 Nobodyer Farm Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary Ann Hanley for the applicant, and Dan Malloyce here. At the last hearing, we continued so that you could get some feedback from Ed Pesci, and I believe he submitted a letter to the board, and I just wanted to know if he had any questions on that. One of the things that he had brought up was about the parking waiver, we had discussed that, excuse me, briefly at the last meeting, all of these structures have garage doors and have vehicles going in and out, there's also, in addition to, and we didn't designate any interior parking, although there certainly is some available, and in addition to the designated parking areas, there are also some fairly good-sized concrete pads that we all know will be used for overflow parking if and when they need to be used. One of the other things that he had mentioned was landscaping, there is some landscaping on the site, in the previous decisions, there have been landscaping requirements, we're not really proposing to change those, there's vegetation along Nobodyer Farm Road, there's board fencing and vegetation along most of the borders between the neighboring properties. So what we're really just trying to do here is clean this up a little bit, and have the parking a little bit more regulated, so that not everybody that wants a free parking space for the airport comes over and parks there. I think the other items on Ed's list, some of the notes that we can make, yeah, it's all minor stuff, we can get it all on, get it on the plan, or have it in the conditions.
Well, staff recommended that we continue this to January to address, I believe, Ed's issues, or are we still on that page? Leslie?
I think the issues that are raised by Ed can be addressed through the final plan set, but he's, he's shaking his head, yes.
He's nodding his head.
Oh, excuse me, nodding.
Yes, no.
So if we could close the public hearing, that would be great.
Any board members have any questions?
No.
This is a public hearing, anybody in the public want to speak to this matter?
Make a motion to close.
Nat's made a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
Okay, Joe seconded, any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve-
For Ed Pesci's.
For Ed Pesci's comments and to take care of, you know, the office.
I'll second.
Ask one clarification through-
I'm going to hold your motion for a second.
Through the chair to Attorney Hanley, is there anything in the former ZBA-
I was just looking at that.
-special permit that shouldn't carry forward?
Because that's my signature on there.
Yeah, I think that's not, you know, we're getting rid of the housing unit.
Okay, so we can just work that out in the decision?
Yeah, we can work that all out in the decision, yeah, we can go over the old ones, but, yeah, we're just asking for a modification to allow these new structures.
Yeah, so we're good.
As the vice chair at that point. All right, so Nat, you made a motion to approve per staff comments, and Ed Pesci's addressed those, and the former ZBA decision?
Seconded, yeah.
And Joe seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
That was an old decision, I haven't looked at for a while. 1995, 22 years ago.
Time flies.
I remember like it was yesterday.
All right, so we're going back to-
All right, so we're going back to yours, which is Island Storage, 12 Bartlett Road. Representing the applicant is our-
You get the other author.
The other author.
For the applicant, Art Gasparro, we're before you tonight for the second public hearing for the Iron, Island Storage Facility proposed at the corner of Bartlett Road and 30 Acres Lane. There were some questions raised at the first meeting, and we have prepared supplemental response to you, updated set of plans, and I think that we have addressed all the comments that came up. I did a point-by-point response to Mr. Pesci's review, and we have received a letter from him as well, that we, we had met the concerns that he had. I won't go through every point, but I do want to just quickly go through some of what the board had raised last time. One of the major things I think that I took back and heard from you was the need for a more comprehensive screening and landscape plan. So what you have here is essentially the, the layout plan, which pretty much stayed the same from, from what was proposed, but further in the pack is a more detailed here, if we can scale that down a little bit, this is the landscape plan that was done with more information about the fencing that's, that's being proposed all the way around. You had asked that we put the screening on the outside of the fence, so that's been done. You can see this detail, this represents, here is the, the project would be on this side, so then you'd have your fencing, and then evergreen, and then some regosa, and then out to the road, and that essentially continues around the, the perimeter of the property. We do have a, a waste recyclable area here, which would have this cedar board fence around it. The other thing that we've produced, which has been included, is the, I think might be helpful if we could, the schematic views, and again, these were very much done to help give a sense of, both architecturally the building, but really the, the screening, you know, so here you can see, this represents the proposed building, you can see the school at the end of the road, this is the screening that's proposed, if we keep going, this is looking up 30 Acres Lane, so again, all of this gets planted, this here is the proposed storage facility. Again, this would be looking from Bartlett Road, 30 Acres Lane here, you know, actual rendering based on the architectural drawings, and the, and then this would be the view from, from Bartlett Road, here's your curb cut, your circulation pattern would be in to this side of the building, around the building, and back out. We also had prepared a swept path vehicle turning analysis plan to show that the truck could actually, fire truck engine one could make it all the way around, I think that's up one. So here, you can see where we used a program that tracks the vehicle, you know, in, around the building. One change I did make was this, these spaces got shifted about six or seven feet north right there, I did have a small conflict, so we, we made that, that adjustment. The other thing I was able to do as a result of using this program, instead of the fixed turning templates that I had originally used, was to tighten up the edge of pavement in here, which would be a, a concrete pavement we'll be using, and then turf stone pavers for the parking, just tightened up a couple places, which allowed us to increase our open space a little bit, got us up to about 17.6 percent, and then, as we had discussed last time, their existing paved, paved bike path right here is about 3.2 percent of the property. I think that really goes to, again, I don't want to go through, take the time to go through every point, but if you had any questions specifically on, on any of the points that we've addressed, we'd be happy to. We also worked with the fire department, and there's correspondence in your packet, back and forth with, with Mr. Bates, and he had asked for an additional fire hydrant, so we have agreed that while there are three fire hydrants within, there's a couple fire hydrants within a couple hundred feet, and then there's one at the end of the road by the school, it's about 600 feet away, we'll still put another one right in here, which I believe would address that concern. And then he had brought up, still worried, concerned about the access, so asked if we would put a gate down in here, and what we actually responded and proposed is not only would we give them a gate here, we would give them another gate on the west side. Those would be for emergency access only, they would not be used-
Because you don't have any right to use those, right?
Right, so it would be just, you know, only fire department, sort of whatever emergency rights are, are needed in that basis. We would propose to make, continue the vegetation, since they're just shrubs across the gates even, and then, in an event of an emergency, obviously, the fire department would have the equipment to cut down a few shrubs and get in there or drive over them. So we don't want to leave an opening in the, in the screening for the neighbors, and we also want to provide the emergency access gates, we, we feel that we actually have, you know, adequate access, but, you know, if that would help with the, with the fire department, and that was, I hadn't heard back from him, but that was the, like I say, all of that correspondence is, is in your packet, and to the best of my knowledge, I think we've done everything that we possibly could to, to, to meet his concerns between preparing this plan. And then the one other issue that had been a point of discussion at the last meeting was related to, to traffic, and so we have an opinion letter prepared by Lloyd Bristol, which is included and breaks down, you know, trip generation, and concludes essentially that, you know, this type of a use is, is low, and the traffic generation is, is not in any way going to overburden the, the local road area network.
It's not loading either.
And I think with that, I'd be happy to address any additional questions or comments that you might have.
We have to sign off on the landscape plan, correct?
Uh huh.
Personally speaking, there's no way on this planet I'm signing off on a vertical aluminum board fence, which is nowhere on this island. When they're talking about security fences for all the other storage ones, we've done maybe three or four now, they all have chain link, you can see through the chain link, the screening will grow into the chain link, I have never seen that fence anywhere on Nantucket, and I'm not going there. So a chain link fence is much more subdued than that, that's a solid aluminum board fence.
I think it has pickets with some spacing, but I, you know, hear what you're saying, I'm not, you know, I didn't-
Never going to happen for me, I can put, like, not putting my HTC hat back on, but that's not happening for me in a landscape plan. I'm not a big fan of chain link anyway, but you've got a lot of screening, and the screening's going to meld into that chain link, and you can see through the chain link.
Okay.
So that's really the only comment I have right now, did, is everything that Ed brought up been addressed, Leslie, or, because it says initially to hold off until everything's addressed?
Linda Billy Cassidy, pardon me, Madam Chairman, Billy Cassidy, I just wanted to define that, the fence that you're describing, in fact, it's a half-inch piece of aluminum bar- In fact, it's a half-inch piece of aluminum bar that's five feet or six feet tall and there's six inches between. It's not in any way, shape or form a board fence. In fact, it's the same gate that exists, it's the same material of the gate that exists out at Old South Road Storage.
Is that Maury's? Is that Maury's?
Yeah.
I've seen, I just saw it yesterday.
Yeah, I just want to clear that up. I have no opinion. If the board is more comfortable with a chain link fabric, that's fine. I had thought that this was less visible than the chain link.
How wide are these slats?
They're half inch by half inch. Spaced six inches apart.
Because this is right on the road as opposed to Maury's, which is way off the road and it's just the gate?
Understandably, but please remember that it'll be behind that evergreen. And the fact of the matter is, I think that the evergreen is going to grow through it quite a bit more. I think it'll disappear quicker than a chain link fabric.
As long as it's not six inches, one inch.
It is absolutely, no, no, I understand completely. That's why I wanted to clarify.
Okay. Okay, anybody, Ed, do you want to sort of address your issues?
So Ed Pesci again, from Pesci Engineering. I did the review of the revised plans. Art addressed all my previous comments. There are a couple of things that went, with the exception of one, which was the fire department, because it hadn't been addressed. The day I sent the letter out, the fire department came back with an email saying, okay, I have a couple of questions, which Art seems to have addressed in general, in its entirety, but we haven't really closed the loop with Mr. Bates yet. But I'm pretty confident that that can be done and if the board is so inclined, you could close the hearing and prove these, if you're inclined, subject to final resolution of the fire department comments. I'll just give you an example. This is the only reason that I'd want to talk to Bob Bates about this, is they're planning to put in two gates. Art told you that he'd like to put in the shrubbery in front of the gates, so that you continue the screening. And that's specifically what Bob Bates asked him not to do, or did ask initially. I don't know if there's been some additional discussions with him or if he's had different thoughts, but he said, including removal or no installation of the planted buffer for the width of the gate, plus space to allow the gates to swing. But I think that what he's proposing is absolutely acceptable. In the emergency, you end up buying some new shrubs, because they drove over them. But I think it's preferable to the neighbors to leave the shrubs there. I understand Bob wanting to have no impediment to using the gate. I don't know what the final outcome could be, final resolution is, but that'd be the only minor resolution that would need to be dealt with before we move forward.
Okay, thank you. John, any comments?
I guess the only thing I'm thinking about is the six inch. I actually would, the gate that, or the fence that you're referring to, the half inch by half inch with the six inch, is that per code, is that okay? I know with child safety, four inch or smaller, where that has to go through a six inch, is that acceptable as far as the safety?
It's not a safety gate.
Yes, what you're referring to is, you know, that stairwell or a deck situation. Yeah, this is just security and there is no code issue.
And I actually like the design of this more than the chain link.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Nat?
I'm good.
Barry?
Yeah, just one comment through you to Leslie. Is there, is there anything that, with either the Bartlett Road bike path or that intersection with Surfside that we need be considering?
For this particular project, I don't think so.
Alright, just wanted to be sure.
And just to be clear, from the last time, because it was a little confusing, there is cars, Dad's car storage in the building, so people are not confused by that.
That's correct.
And there's no exterior storage on the side.
No exterior storage. It was just a category?
Right, because I know she asked for the waiver for it and I just wanted to.
It's sort of hard to parcel.
Just because your category says interior and exterior, so that we referenced.
Okay, I kind of thought so, but just to be sure. Thank you.
Joe?
I'm good.
Anybody over there? Carl, David, Steve?
Yep, just if I could get an update. The buffer area along the Thirty Acres Lane, how are rights and responsibilities in that being worked out? Is there an update on that? Because it's not, I understand, within the property bounds?
They don't have any rights.
Right, it's not within the property bounds and this property does not have legal rights in Thirty Acres Lane, which that's a part of. We're going to be trying to work with the neighbors in terms of getting their permission to plant it. We'd like to do that. And we're reaching out to them to discuss it, but nothing has developed as yet.
Okay, Carl, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Alrighty, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience like to speak to this matter? Okay. Someone make a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Leslie, this is something we should hold, or we can address the fire department and through the staff?
Well, I don't think it's-
I think they should have the screening personally over those gates.
And that's something that the planning board can require, so you can take the fire department's comments into consideration and
Don't put any trees, don't put any trees in front of them. Make sure it's all stuff you can just run right over like arborvitae or Leland Cypress or some other thing. Privet gets a little tough.
Madam Chairman, this is my fault. I saw the letter from the fire department talking about, you know, exposing the area with the gates. And I feel it's our obligation to provide the screen to the neighborhood. What we're talking about is simply a robust hedge and I believe it is absolutely no issue, in the event of an emergency, for the fire department to breach whatever, we're talking about some Rosa Regosa, the trees themselves that would, the trees that are illustrated will not be in front of any gates. And it's, you know, driving over a hedge if necessary.
Okay. So we can keep going.
Okay, and to clarify, you want to move forward with the landscape plan as presented? Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so we've closed the public hearing. Somebody want to make a motion for Ed Pesci in the agreement on the landscaping?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Orange Street Residential Modification, 141 Orange Street. Ed has already gone through this one as well. So you got caught in between us and the HTC again?
Yeah, this is simply a matter of making some minor changes to conform the plan to what the HTC has approved. And there were also some open engineering issues and our engineer's been in touch with Ed and I think Ed can speak to that, but I think they're on the same page. The concept would be that all the changes would be made to the plans.
What exactly changed between what we saw and the HTC?
Oh, I think it got rotated around a little bit again. It's essentially the same building.
Didn't it get pulled back from the road?
Yeah.
And angled a little bit?
And angled, yep.
Why on earth did they angle it?
I don't know.
Well, looks much better.
Yeah, I think it does come out as a better plan.
Okay, and the parking still works?
Yep.
Okay.
It's also a slightly different entrance.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's up on Dave now, which is something we asked for before.
Right.
Okay. And there's no access, vehicular access on Orange Street anymore?
No.
Which is pretty much where we wanted to go to begin with.
Right.
Okay, anybody have any comments? Staff recommended approval per Ed's, per your comments.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, just to add to this, I, my intention would be, if the board want to move forward, is to finalize these plans with Josh Swirling from Bowler Engineering to ensure that the final comments that Mike Burns had given them about the curb and so on, it looks like everything's in good shape. Just want to make sure that the final plans get put together will reflect that. So that bike lane, not bike path, but bike lane in the road and the curbing there all get integrated the way that Mike wanted, the intention to be there in front of the building. And then the rest of it, they've already addressed. They've already addressed all the other technical comments. And the stuff on Dave Street is a different list. I don't have that list, but, right, but that's a, right, that's a different list that I'd have to make sure they get, they've addressed and I would need to go through that with perhaps Arthur, but need to go through that with Josh to make sure they develop that.
And you still have parking under the building?
Correct.
Because I don't see enough parking outside. Because it's changed, the building configuration changed. It's an L shape now and it wasn't really an L shape before.
Right, that's right.
Okay. Board members, any comments? Barry, Nat?
I think he.
I'm just trying to remember what we asked for and I don't know if Leslie remembers that. Sure, it's, with that entrance of parking, did it change anything that we? I just, this is a little while ago. I don't remember every little detail.
No, we wanted.
I know we asked for the curb to be flushed.
Yes.
On the turn, so we got the turning right issue.
Correct.
I know we had some issues with the other property that was kind of in the layout, sort of thing.
Correct.
We can't really make a sidewalk. I know we wanted to, but we couldn't do it. Because there's no way to do it.
Right.
I mean, you have to move a house. So we got what we wanted out of this property owner. I believe that was all we could get, so.
And then, yeah.
On the Dave does have a flush granite curb going, transitioning around to Dave's.
Yep.
Will reveal on Dave's Street, right at the handicap ramp to that sidewalk.
Okay.
And the sidewalk goes all the way up to the commons, not to the commons, but as far as it can go, up that side before you run into a house?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good, okay.
Alright, any other questions, Joe? Anybody down there? There's no real change there that's significant, right?
No, some of those just may need some adjustments to match the current proposal.
Yeah, because the parking's different, the access is different. Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anybody have a comment about this in the public?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Was it still open from before, right? No. Okay, so we don't have, so we don't, well, it's under the public hearings, but sort of like a new public hearing, right?
It's a modification to the prior permit.
Right.
We don't need to make two motions here, right? Because it's in here, it's in here legally. It's not a minor mod. It's a regular modification.
We just need to close the hearing and.
Right, so Nat, Barry, who made the motion to close the public hearing?
And I'll second it.
Barry seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, somebody make a motion to approve per Ed's comments and working out the plan in the office?
Yep, that's my motion.
Is that your motion? Barry, is that your second?
Yeah, sure.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
All those in, what?
Didn't we already have a public hearing and already closing?
But I think that with the modification stuff.
No, no, this is for me to know. All the things up here.
We just closed it.
If you have a mod, isn't it automatically a new hearing?
If you make substantial modifications to a previously issued permit, then you have to open a new public hearing.
We didn't make it a minor mod.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Over in the second page, Old South Road Crossing, off Old South Road, Nancy Anne Lang, Greg Lynn Evans and Dave Kim. You're jumping up again, Dave.
And I am going to recuse.
And Barry's recusing.
Hey, you have plans over there, right?
I think, sorry, through you, Madam Chair, those are the ones that Holly put up on the board, other than maybe that one, if we need it. I'm not sure we will, so.
Leslie, I can activate an alternate, right? Leslie?
No, because it's a subdivision.
It's a subdivision.
Good evening again, Madam Chairman, Board members, Dave Armetti, Richard Gray Point Development. This is a very technical, minor confirmatory approval, piggybacking on top of your approval of our subdivisions back in January and February. This is essentially withdrawing our lots from existing subdivisions, so that we can overlay down the new subdivisions, because you can't have two simultaneous subdivisions on the same property, as the board is well aware. And as Attorney Reed can confirm to the board, if necessary, even though it is a very minor item, under the Subdivision Control Act and your own subdivision regs, you have to have a public hearing for this type of action, hence why we're under public hearings and had to comply with all those regulations. But basically, this is withdrawing out the area in the green, which is our Old South Crossing subdivision and our Meadows Two Apartments. The Meadows Two Apartments are here, as the board is fully aware, which is the 20 Dave Kim property, the former asphalt plant in gravel pit. The Old South Road Crossing subdivision is the northern half of what used to be the overall 16514Z subdivision that never had a name, just a number. So we're pulling out the Old South Road Crossing from the 16514Z and the Meadows Two from the 16514Z, just because we can't have two simultaneous subdivisions overlapping each other. And remaining will be the orange, the guts of what was the original 16514Z subdivision remains intact with no changes. Even though it is very minor, I do want to acknowledge, because they put in some time to do this, I think in the package, the board has letters of support for this from both of the more intensive trucking uses in the area, that being Cape Cod Express and Shepley Wood Products. They both submitted letters of support for this. They've been fully in the loop in terms of the roadway changes and the subdivision changes that are going to come and are fully supportive, because obviously, we all believe it'll improve the safety and the capacity and the efficiency of this entire roadway system. So with that said, other than the fact that you took similar action on our Sandpiper subdivisions last month, when we withdrew the Cedar Crest One subdivision formally and the Cedar Crest Three subdivision formally, so it's a very similar action. Thank you.
Anything to add, Leslie?
No, we recommend approval.
Okay, any comments from the board? Okay, any comments from the public? Not seeing anything.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Somebody make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the subdivision modifications.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Arthur, that was continued to, it shouldn't have been on here. The next one.
Thank you. Off to the length court.
Somebody make a motion to go 8717 to January 8th without opening?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You can go home. The Green Lady Dispensary, everybody's favorite subject.
That's where all the people have, I thought it was for the other one.
Which one? Oh, clay or something?
No, I thought it was for the 14th Street or Old Island.
Yeah, I did too. Really unusual. Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Michael Wilson, on behalf of your applicant. And they are Principals Nicole and Rupert Campbell. And I have with me tonight Jeremy Shaw, Attorney Jeremy Shaw from Vicente Soderberg, who is the state, that firm is handling the state licensing application, so he'll be able to field any questions you may have on that aspect of it. And Chuck Lindhart from Sandcastle Construction, who is the general contractor on the build-out of the renovation work, actually, the interior of these buildings. What we're asking the board to approve is an application for a special permit for the operation of a medical marijuana treatment center. The property is located in the CN Zone, as you see on the picture. It's the address of 11 Amelia Drive. It used to be a dentist office in the back building and up front was residential. What the applicant's proposing is that the dentist office is going to be converted into the basement level for production and the second floor or the ground level for interaction with the public, the dispensary location and then.
That's the dentist office in the back?
The old dentist office, right. That's the only location that the public would come into and it's a single use. The building up front is only for employees to do the processing and the manufacturing of the product.
Is that where the cultivation's going to be in the house?
Cultivation will be in the basement and the first floor.
Of the house?
Mr. Lindhart, what was the residential portion, that's correct. The parking calculation that was provided indicates that no waivers are requested or needed with respect to any of the aspects of what we believe that the permit is seeking. One wrinkle, and I'm looking at staff's comment on it, and it's with respect to the suggestion that an easement be granted and it would more or less, I think how it was envisioned would be from the teal diagonal line delineating the lot line, probably the northerly lot line, toward the location which is owned by the town of Nantucket, where the public, where we are, actually, the public safety complex and the, I guess, new location of the fire station. When we met with town administration and with the police chief this summer in anticipation of the permitting at the selectments level, it was offered up, it was proposed, and it was resoundingly rejected. They do not, the chief of police weighed in heavily on it. He does not want an easement. They had concerns about a number of things, safety being a major concern. Part of the licensing application. Part of the licensing application for not only a building permit but to move forward at the state level was to first secure approval from our selectmen. And so, the selectmen issued a letter of support for this location on the condition that there is a community host benefit agreement, and that is part of the state law. There has to be some benefit to the town monetarily. On top of what the selectmen required this applicant to do with the percentage of the sales was instead of any type of easement access, they requested, and my clients have agreed, to contribute $50,000 in a payment to the town, and it is part of the agreement which has been drafted and approved and signed by town council as well as by the client, to install lighting in the parking area where the community safety complex is going to be located. So, that was what the town requested. They do not want an easement there. Other than that, I feel as though what you have before you is addressing the issues that the zoning code contemplates when looking for a permit to operate this type of facility. And questioning from anyone, I can direct it to whichever aspect the question is most...
I don't have any questions on the use. I think after everything we've been through before town meeting and whatnot, I think we all understand it. I know the property very well, he was my dentist at one point. It lends itself to it. I've just got a couple of questions. I know you can't put it within 500 feet under state law of anything that involves kids' classes and stuff. How does that impact the Artists Association down at the end of the road?
It is, and the state has sort of an either-or. There is a default provision, if the town has not enacted zoning to specify where the town believes the facility should be located, then you use the state definition which you're speaking of, Madam Chair. This town, as we all know, has identified this location and the selectmen have endorsed it. So, they meet the definitional requirements for both local and state licensing on that.
And I know from a planning point of view, we've been talking about an access because we're talking about the development of Six Fairgrounds Road.
Yeah.
The running weight drive through all the way.
Yeah.
Having, you know, outlets.
My clients are sensitive to that, and when initially we thought that that would be a benefit, and we did meet with planning staff early on in this process.
And that's been on the plan.
And offered and explored that. The chief of police and the town manager were not, at any level, willing to go that way. And they wanted the money contribution instead of...
The planning board can always make that a condition. Because that's been something we've been after all along, is to get from that side to Amelia Drive because we're going to take Amelia Drive and make that wider and parking better and pass and repass better. And that was all part of the whole thing. I'm not sure how, you know, Andrew's been driving that one, and he's not here, he's in North Carolina, South Carolina. Barry?
So, I'm not sure this is going to close tonight. I think there's going to be a few things that are going to come up. But somehow, either by getting a transcript to us or by you telling us orally, I'd really love to hear what those safety issues are. Because I think that that really is a very important feature for us to be aware of on a few different levels. I've heard this conversation come up before, and I'd really like to get my head wrapped around that one.
Sure.
Because sometimes I think there's reasonable safety and then there's...
Ridiculous safety.
Off-the-wall safety. And so, in fairness and deference, not having been part of that conversation or having heard it, I'd like access to it to begin to understand that as one member of this board. Because as Linda said, you know, one of the things that the planning board always looks at is the interconnectedness of how things are supposed to flow at this point. So, if there's a way to make better sense of it without shunting traffic and making Amelia Drive, you know, again, we're going to revise Amelia Drive. But here we go again, what does that mean? And is there better ways for us to be dealing with that? So, I'm not going to let this one off the table quite yet.
Sure, I can appreciate that, and my clients appreciate that.
Yeah.
And through Madam Chair. I'm just looking, and we're all looking practically before this meeting, when we received the staff comment, at 9 Amelia Drive.
Yep.
And it begs the board to look at the lot line now.
Which one is nine? Is that Mulcahy's?
To the north or up, upward. There's a yoga studio, Chip Webster design on the second floor, exactly.
Yeah, that's Mulcahy's office right there.
So, if there was a proposal for, I'm assuming if you're looking for a way to improve flow, you're looking for road or vehicle traffic, is that correct?
Yep.
I think you've got to bring nine into the conversation on that.
Sure.
Half on yours, half on theirs.
Looking at the way that the driveways are located on this Amelia Drive and the way that you'd be proposing, you're really looking for more access from 9 Amelia Drive than 11.
Wait, yes and no.
Again, this is something that we brought to the town manager and the chief of police. It was not a public meeting with minutes kept, so I could only point you back to, I guess, the community host.
What was the safety issue, as Barry's asking, can you...
Lighting. It was lighting. Chief of police said that there is a significant issue with vandalism and loitering in that location, and it's too dark to start increasing traffic foot or vehicle. And that's where the contribution for lighting was offered, and my clients accepted.
Well, I thought the town should provide the lighting in our own parking lot, and you get the cut-through. That's ridiculous. Barry?
Yeah, so, Mike, let me just go back to you.
Yep.
So, just so that we're not hashing this tonight, okay? I think it would be helpful to somehow get a letter to us, since you were part of that conversation.
Sure.
I don't want you to be discouraged by this, but this is really now the first time you're going to be before this board. I think it's worth checking back in on our perspective as well, too, once you get that to us and begin to have a conversation with the board of selectmen and the police to begin to understand what that really begins to mean. Not to put you guys in the middle, but let us try to sort out some of the details behind it.
Sure.
But that's where I've got to count on you to kind of bring that forward to us so that we're not just walking in there blind.
Right. It wasn't a matter for the board of selectmen, it wasn't something that they had discussed in our hearings in our business before the board or concluded with respect to the opposition, the letter of non-opposition, which was actually a letter of support.
Yeah.
It was the meeting with just the chief. I can talk to the agreement that speaks to this issue, which is the contract written by town council.
Yep.
And it says, "Upon receipt of a special permit to operate a medical marijuana treatment center at the facility, company shall make a payment to the town in the amount of $50,000 for improvements to be made to the municipal parking lot located to the rear of the facility, provided however that such amount shall be subtracted from the first annual payment made by the company to the town pursuant to..."
I have a big problem with that.
When was that, Mike, can I just ask you, when was that put into place?
This was put into place as a condition of...
Date.
Like a license condition?
No, what date was it, I'm so sorry. I didn't ask the right question.
Can we scroll on this up?
Jeremy Shaw. Jeremy Shaw for Green Lady Dispensary. It was made part of the host-community agreement. It's a required agreement that's signed between a medical marijuana dispensary and a community.
Sure.
So, that's the community benefit part of this?
Yes, it was signed, I forget, in the past week. It was agreed upon, this meeting happened weeks ago, it was kind of an ongoing process. We appeared before board of selectmen a couple of times, and we're negotiating these points in connection with that.
Yeah. It's just kind of curious because I know this is something we've discussed as well, too, why we weren't brought to the table on the same thing. You know what I'm saying? So, as one member of the board, I'd kind of like a little bit not to put you guys in jeopardy. Hear me loud and clear on that. Because I don't want you in the middle of something that needs to take place. But I'm feeling like as one member of this board, I'd like to reopen that discussion with them and just kind of make sure that everything is well-vetted. Because Linda brought up the point, which I would bring back up again, is that especially with the grand plan for what we're getting into this area between the affordable housing project that we're going to do with...
Halkeem.
Yep, with Halkeem, and some of the planning that we need to do for both Old South Road, Fairgrounds Road, Tacoma Road, Amelia, and set all those things into place, here we go. I just want to make sure that all that has been vetted properly. I don't want to miss this opportunity in any way, shape, or form. So, and the other thing, too, is I think $50,000 worth of lighting kind of blows my mind a little bit because there are other things that, again, just having cited that laundry list to you, there are other things that kind of need to happen in that area. And I'm wondering if that is the best and highest utilization of that funding. So, again, not trying to put you in the middle of it, but I would like to see, again, through staff and, again, through at least a meeting or two, just to see if we can come to some common sense issues here. So, thank you, I appreciate that so much.
Nat?
I mean, I hate to say this, it's the first time I heard about this, Pat, and I've watched every selectmen's meeting that has happened with this issue, and I appreciate you being here, by the way. Thank God we did the zoning, which was not that easy to get through town meeting, by the way. For this reason. So, I see the 50 grand should go to Amelia Drive. Do you know how many complaints this board has had for Amelia Drive?
Can I say?
It's incredible.
I do want to interrupt you.
You do?
That's, well...
You are interrupting me.
That's their agreement.
I understand that, I understand.
Hold on, hold on. Not going back and forth.
I'm just speaking, Joe.
Just finish, just finish.
I'm just speaking on, like, from a planning perspective. We used to get, we get contributions in the past for bike pass and general things when there's not something pressing in that project for waivers. You meet requirements, like, there's nothing wrong with this application under our purview. However, Amelia Drive is like the hottest thing going as far as complaints and the passing and we can't, you know, the way it was laid out, 24 feet, not wide enough, et cetera. As Linda mentioned, the town is taking that road, which everybody knows except probably you. But that isn't free. So, whatever the selectmen required, I don't know where that requirement came from. It's just unfortunate that that is not going to the road instead of the parking. I mean, that's going to be a whole nother project with money coming out of wherever to fix all that. I see this road as the issue personally, okay?
It doesn't really have anything to do with you.
But it has nothing to do with us, I understand that.
With them, there's nothing to do with them.
But if I could just address where that came from. That didn't come from the applicant.
Oh, I know.
I know, I know.
It came from the chief and the town.
In my opinion, they should have been talking about Amelia Drive. But that's not our problem.
And they shouldn't have been talking to us, and they didn't.
Yeah, and I don't want to get into a back-and-forth between boards and things, that's not what this is about.
Leslie's been trying to talk for the last 10 minutes. Leslie?
Thanks. Before we maybe derail too much on...
Derailing, yes we are.
The community host agreement, which is completely within the purview of a different board. And what we're here to discuss tonight, which is the special permit for the use, a couple of ideas. First of all, they're not asking for any parking waivers or anything else. So, asking for, like, contributions towards the taking of Amelia Drive might be a little bit of a stretch.
No, we're not asking for that.
But, I'm just putting that out there. There have been many other applications where the board has requested that the applicant grant easements to the town without any prior discussion with the board of selectmen or any other groups. And in those cases, there's been a condition that says, you know, the applicant agrees to offer the easement, but in the event it's not accepted, it doesn't adversely affect this permit. So, unless they're opposed to granting an easement, I would suggest some type of flexible language like that in the decision.
Sure.
And I forgot what my other point was, but I'm sure I'll remember before we...
I'm having a big problem with that one, period.
No, I think she's absolutely right about the easement. And I think you'll find out if you have a site plan that the driveway's in the center of the property line. This is just the GIS.
Yeah, that's not really relevant up there.
So, I think that's a great idea that Leslie had. And the only other, and I don't think we should hold them up because they did some stuff with the selectmen, and that's got nothing to do with us.
Well, it does, from a planning point of view.
We might not like it, we weren't involved, blah, blah, blah. But that shouldn't affect them. The other thing is, they could dedicate their rights in Amelia Drive to the town.
Yes.
As their contribution, so that when we do do the taking, they wouldn't get paid.
And I believe my third point had something to do with that. It was going to be that they would agree to work cooperatively if a taking takes place or something like that.
Well, here's my problem. We can all pussyfoot around this thing and say, okay, well, offer an easement, yay, great, and the selectmen won't take it, and we don't get the connection between, we have two parallel roads running side by side. We've got Amelia Drive and weight drive, with no connection between the two of them. And the whole plan of us discussing this for months and months and months, and Andrew and I talking about it forever and ever and ever, is lost because we don't get the road, the connection between the two. And when he left, he said, "This is great, they'll give us the connection between the two," not knowing about the selectmen thing. He gave us a connection between the two, and that's what, from a planning point of view, we're sick and tired of roads to nowhere like Sarus and Essex where I can see it from here, but there's a fence there. That's ridiculous stuff.
But it's up to us to fight it out with the selectmen, not up to them.
No, but we're never going to get it.
Madam Chairman, if I may point out, they can give it, but it doesn't mean anything if the selectmen doesn't accept it.
So, they're never going to get it.
Look, when we had the meeting for Tacoma, the selectmen said they were going to do everything possible for parking, making the conditions better.
Yeah, well, that didn't work out.
Well, no.
Well...
It got approved.
Well, again, also...
And, you know, so they were on board with making the situation better. And they can't back down on that now.
Well, Michael?
But they shouldn't, the applicants should be held up because of this.
The selectmen never went through this particular subject, correct?
That's correct. I wanted to make it clear that it was not a matter that the board of selectmen took up in our two hearings before them. And it wasn't a prohibition that the board of selectmen, that the board imposed. This was at a meeting that we had in June, I believe it was late June.
So, two people made that decision?
I don't know who made the decision. It was with the town manager, the Mr. Santa Maria, and Chief Pittman, myself, and the applicant.
So, we can take this to the actual board of selectmen?
I don't know the process that you would be able to...
Because it appears from Leslie, what Leslie's saying, the only thing, either we require it or we do the language about, you know, the easement and Amelia Drive issues when we take the road. I mean, is that as far as we can go? Because I'm really not happy.
Well, I think Deputy Director Snell can confirm that this came from an initial meeting early in June as our clients were proactive and meeting with planning to come up with ideas that would make it possible.
Yeah, and they were fine with that.
That's where it came. It was taken from the applicant when they thought it was something that the town wanted. It seems it wasn't what all the town wanted.
It's what the planning department wants.
Just to clarify, you can only require it to the extent that you put a condition in the decision that says the property owner agrees to draft and offer an easement to the town through the board of selectmen or the county commissioners, but that's it, because they have to take the step, county commissioners or selectmen, to accept it.
And you can't defer to another board. All we can do is say, "This is what we're asking for," and then put the languages about Amelia Drive.
And that's typically the way it's handled, to include that condition.
Well, I'd just rather the gang of five make that decision instead of two people behind a closed door.
I mean, with more clarification from our staff to the selectmen, acting as the county or whatever, would help make, bring more light to this, in my opinion. Because if this was a clean piece of dirt, meaning number nine and number 11 right now, and we had the Halkeem thing going on, it would already be happening.
Yep.
I mean, that's, I mean, I'm sorry about my comment about the 50,000. I just, I don't like you writing a check for something that we don't need. That's all I was saying. I wasn't trying to say, you know, one or the other.
It wasn't an offer, it was...
I see it as kind of...
It was a requirement.
I understand that, I just don't see the benefit. But anyway, I mean, I'm looking at this now thinking, you know, a little differently than I was 10 minutes ago. And I'm like, the neighbor, you're going to end up sharing parking, this is going to be like Mid Island, is turning out in a lot of places that we tried to get that to happen on West Creek Road and the banks and all that. And that's what's going to happen. And if we, so I think we should go with what Leslie said, let that process happen. At the same time, when Andrew gets back, maybe there can be some...
Further dialogue.
With you two to kind of nudge this a little bit. Because when you open something up and make it so people can get in and out, that makes it safer. When you have, you have crime situations or whatever he's calling it, when there's nobody around, not when there's people... around, not when there's people around. When you open it up, it's going to make it better, not worse.
Can we...
That's just true.
Can we ask for a walking path between the two?
There you go.
That's kind of essential because everybody's going to be parking back on Wait Drive.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous to have to go all the way out on Old South Road or go all the way over to Tacoma to walk around the corner to go down the block. That's stupid. That's not what we're doing. Richmond's even providing walking paths over to Evergreen.
So, typically, the planning board decision would specify vehicular easement or pedestrian easement or both, and when those would be required to be offered. So, typically, it's before the CO, but typically, there's not already a building there, so it could be within so many years of the CO or so many years after operation or whatever parameters that you want it set. And it could be, you know, if it's vehicular and pedestrian, the vehicular one has to be offered or completed or something at some point in time, whereas the pedestrian's more immediate, or it can really be set however.
Well, can you believe Richmond, where we required the walking connection between Richmond and Evergreen and Daffy? Mayflower.
In our Richmond decision, you required that they construct it to the end of their property, and then the rest of it had to depend on actions taken by other people. So, I mean, it looks like there's a parking lot that's already pretty much to the property line here, but you could certainly do more, I suppose.
So, quickly, why? Because these opportunities do not come along a real lot.
Apple.
Okay? If, when the dentist office was initially put in, if we could have seen far enough ahead, we probably would have looked for it then. The area's relatively now well-developed. This is an opportunity for us as a board, again, to look at that interconnectedness. These will not come along a real lot in the future. So, that's why, as one member of this board, I'm kind of urging to really want to explore that issue within a relatively short period of time, and then make some determinations about what would be in the best interest, you know, both the applicant and for the town in this instance. But, like I said, what's come up tonight, I'd probably say, if you're not gauging by how the board's reacting, we're all kind of a little blindsided at the moment. So, that's why you maybe hear us trying to get our head wrapped around. That's why I'm thinking, you know, as much information you can provide back to us will also help in that process to try to work things out without try, again, without really trying to mess things up here in any way, shape, or form. Leslie brought up, you know, the right way to try to deal with this as well, too, so that, again, you're not held to that condition necessarily if the town in its wisdom decides not to fall away ahead with it. So, does that, does that help a little bit, I hope?
Soften the blow, but, but...
Yeah, I know.
You're talking about possibly triggering the need to come back for a waiver from parking, which, which you're saying...
I was just going to ask you about that.
You're going to take out two spots.
Is it, you can't jiggle it around? I'm trying to figure that out.
We were looking at it.
All right.
Looks like there's two spots that are going. That's why I said maybe bringing nine Amelia into the loop. I think the only, to address Mr. Rector's request, the only feedback we got was, it's dark over there, and that's why there's crime, so give us money for lights. So, I don't know where to go to get you more information about the other safety concerns that the police had.
That's not their fault.
May I?
Go ahead.
So, I think, just like I said, providing us that information in writing is good because it will, I think, allow staff and this board to begin to flesh out those issues a little bit better in terms of doing that. And frankly, if it were vehicular, you've got something on the other side here, which is going to be a lot of parking. So, as one member of this board, would I waive you two spaces to make better sense out of things?
Yeah, of course.
Probably, yeah, I probably would as one member. Okay? Again, but it's a discussion I want to have with staff as well, too, to make sure that that's a workable scenario.
And, and what Leslie brought up earlier, Barry, about the front, and not, you know, that's going to be parking on the street eventually. So, we're thinking, see, we're thinking ahead, not right this second. We don't have a problem with your request at all. It's the other stuff we're trying to figure out. We don't want to make any mistakes that have solutions now that we're trying to think of. You know, if this, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, when this was put in, the electric company's still on that property, with the '83 house subdivision plan approved. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we're just a whole different world now. You know what I mean? So, we're just trying to plug the holes, so...
Madam Chair, would the board consider a motion similar to the suggestions that Deputy Director Snell had about moving forward? As Mr. Mark Lengler points out, we're not asking for waivers. They have a winter in order to do some interior renovation work, which Mr. Landhart's anticipating and excited to do. Would the board consider that, realizing that the, that the applicants come forward with these offers, and it wasn't something that the applicant took from the board? So, we don't want you to feel as though that was a blind side.
No, we don't blame them at all.
I don't see what...
But I just want to make sure the language is in the decision that if they, they're offering the easement for access for pedestrian and vehicular access from Wait Drive, and that, some language, Leslie, about Amelia Drive when we get to start taking it. Are there any other, I know there's a lot of restrictions already in the law. Are there any conditions that we need to add? Michael, any conditions that we need to add?
Okay, just one point on, I think Attorney Wilson brought up, that if a vehicular easement was accepted and then some connection was constructed, it may eliminate parking spaces.
That's fine.
We do have a provision in the bylaw that specifically says actions taken by the government, whether it's local, state, federal, whatever.
Doesn't make it non-conforming.
Yeah, it just makes it legally non-conforming, so you wouldn't need to come back for that. I'm all in favor of you all going forward with an approval tonight, but we do need to talk about hours of operation, some of those basic things.
Yes, I'm saying, what else do we need?
Maybe in the application package, but we haven't talked about it.
Hang on one second.
So, in terms of hours of operation...
Put it right to your mouth. There you go.
In terms of hours of operation, certainly, it's not unusual to see certain conditions like that in a special permit. If, have you thought about hours? You have a mind?
Um, not, oh, sorry.
Right up to it.
Um, not having actually gotten to the point to think about being open, there's so many steps to do between now and then. Something general is, that I was thinking, for instance, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, with a little variation in there, obviously, maybe on the weekend, like, Sunday, you don't open until noon, or maybe during the winter, when it gets dark earlier, closing at 8:00. So, I do know in general that in other places, people like to be able to go there after work hours, to be able to get medical supplies and prescriptions filled. So, it is important to have hours that work around when people work from 9:00 to 5:00. But besides that, I don't have anything more specific, like, I can't say Monday through Friday, it's this, and Saturday and Sunday, it's, it's something different.
Leslie, any condition, I think 9:00 PM right now is probably too late. There's a lot of, there's going to be an awful lot of residences around that as well. That's just me. I'd rather see it earlier than 9:00, just to start out and see how this goes.
Sure.
Leslie, you have any list of things?
I don't. I mean, they're not really asking for any waivers. It's just about the use specifically, so we have the easement. We have some cooperation on the Amelia Drive taking when that happens, if that happens. Maybe 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM Monday, seven days a week.
Sounds fine with me.
Carl, you had a comment?
I just had a comment going back to the vehicular or pedestrian access, and I guess I just have a question through you, Madam Chair, to staff or to someone on the board. What is to prevent the owners being on every property owner on the west side of Amelia Drive connecting to Wait's Drive? Why is it these people have to connect to Wait's Drive? Why doesn't every single lot on the west side have to connect to Wait's Drive? Isn't that...
Because they want a permit.
I've forgotten.
Because that's an apple.
And you don't want, you don't want that many access points. You don't want that many access points. We have talked about it, just, hang on one second. We have talked about when Wait Drive goes through, being able to connect the back of Fusaro's, they're all in favor of it, the liquor store, Fusaro's, the bake shop coming out of the back of Wait Drive. So, you'll never have to go on Old South Road. You can come in and out that way. We have talked about that access. That would create a real problem with parking if we, every single thing on Amelia Drive had access from the Wait Drive parking lot, that'd wipe out dozens of parking spaces. So, we have an opportunity here, right dead center of the Wait Drive parking, to go in and out where there isn't a problem taking away other parking in Wait Drive.
But I don't think it's fair to the applicant to, the owners be on them to solve the issue of access onto Amelia Drive. I don't, I don't think that's fair.
We're not going to force that on them. If they, if it works out with the selectmen, that's great. Steve?
Does the vehicle care about that?
Well, they are.
About the easement? I guess I'm just concerned for, for instance, pedestrians, so I imagine a lot of vehicles coming in and out. I know, for example, the yoga studio fills up the parking lot entirely for its yoga classes, so I'm just concerned in the sense about people getting accidentally backed up into, if it's a pedestrian, I mean, anyone would think that. No one, I mean, it's your property, you know, you feel responsible for those types of things. So, you know, and, and yes, there's positive things, like unlimited parking back there is a good thing. So, there are good things, and there are concerns. I know, generally speaking, people had expressed the opinion that they liked that the dentist's office was more discreet and put off from the road. People had liked that the front building is like a natural barricade to the back building. So, from everything from privacy for patients, so they're not right on the front page, you know, being seen going in and out, to, to just people on the road, you know, if, say, say it's busy back there, so people on the road wouldn't see what's going on in the sense that it's privacy, privacy discretion, and so forth. So, I guess I do wonder, with a lot of traffic going in and out, what it would do to that situation. I don't really have the answers. These are just thoughts that go through my head.
You make a lot of good points. The minimum should be just a pedestrian, so they can come from Wait Drive parking area to get into you and then back out again. Steve, you had a question?
Yeah, I just, question, comment type thing. Support the concept of the planning board taking an opportunity to get an easement if it's offered. I do have some concerns about both vehicular and pedestrian. Looking eyeballing it, you're looking at about maybe a 20-foot width, 20-foot wide strip on that particular lot for both cars and a sidewalk, and I believe that the front building will still be labeled Building 2, is still a residence. So, kind of mirroring what Carl had said, is that it's, it's a heavy weight on this particular lot. Still, I support the planning board looking and trying to get, get the easement. I also support Joe's comment that while we're here, if we can get rights to their portion of whatever we may need for Amelia, that's one less to deal with. However, I do want to say, you know, with the bigger picture of Wait's Drive, and I'm involved with other committees with, involved with roads and access and capital assets, I don't want to be, get the easement if we can, but don't be too short-sighted. We have a lot going on in that area. We do have fresh dirt right down the street at Seven Amelia, and if there was an actual road with an actual sidewalk and some green space and some parallel parking, I'm not saying, I don't know, but I'm just saying, let's not look too small, and while we're all here, I just want to bring it up as a matter of dialogue.
Barry, do you have a comment?
No, I just, I just kind of want to go back to things. Why doesn't everyone else contribute at this point? Because they may decide they don't want to. So, in, right, so in relation, this is before us at the moment. Nothing else is. And in order to do something in the future, short of, God knows what's going to happen with Seven, but now you're talking, you're getting into takings, which is its own beast unto itself. So, this is where I go back to, as it may seem a little bit opportunistic, but here we go again. In my mind's eye, that's where it boils down to responsible planning. So, this, this is an opportunity for us, I think, to try to do something, but like I said, there's, there's been a lot of kind of breaking information tonight for this one person right here, and that's where I would really appreciate that opportunity to, to begin to, to really just flesh this out with, between now and next month, and, and just hammer out these issues, kind of, and, you know, I know the holidays are upon us, too, but at least try to hammer these issues out the best we can. So, thank you.
I just want to comment. I think we have a willing applicant who's pretty much agreed to an easement, to agree to handing over maybe the rights to Amelia, to a $50,000 contribution, all the, all of that, and wherever it goes, however it's distributed, is within the town and the planning board, and that's kind of on our issue. We've talked about maybe opening it up to connect to Wait Drive. We've talked about potentially losing two parking places, which, looking at the proper planning, as one of our board members stated, we can maybe fix that with some parallel parking. There's been discussions about making Amelia one way, Wait making one way, coming back, and then that might open up parallel to create the two extra spaces for that. I just feel like everything that we're talking about is not directly putting a burden on the applicant, but we are going to, we're talking about tying up for another month. I think the willingness and of the applicant, and maybe putting in writing, the terminology that Leslie was stating, we may be able to move forward and let the other questions that we have take place within ourselves and not put that on the applicant.
Well said.
I'd also like, just like to, if I could just speak to some of the contributions of the Green Lady, just to make clear, the $50,000 is really just the beginning here, and it's 3% of gross revenue ongoing.
On top of the 50 grand.
Uh, well, just, just to clarify, I believe the 50,000 is taken out of that, and that's because it's capped at 3% by state law. So, in terms of, you know, the Campbells obviously love the community and want to make it better, but just to Mr. Borchert's point, these are not small matters. Our, our application fits with all the requirements for the special permit, and I say that with all due respect, I understand the desires of the town. It's some, an easement would be ongoing. It's, it's something, it's a property right the town would own. It would reduce the property value, so I just would like that to be part of the conversation, and I think that, you know, like, like it's been noted, the Green Lady is really looking to help out the community here, and I appreciate the, taking into account their concerns as well, as private business owners.
Well, I just, I still am going to have a hard time getting over that, holding you up for 50 grand for something that the town should be undertaking to begin with on its own, on its own property, behind the police station, behind our building over there, behind this building and our building at two fairgrounds, which is something that, even the light is out now and is dark as hell over there. Andrew and I went out in the parking lot, could barely see our cars because the, the street light in the parking lot is out. These are things that the town should have undertaken, particularly with the development of Wait Drive under the town auspices, the development of Wait coming all the way through, the expansion of the parking lot back there, which is really dark. I have to use my brights to get through it, to get, even get out of it from back there. This is something the town should have done on its own.
But Linda...
And I'm having a problem with them holding them up for 50, just philosophically, I'm having a problem with them holding them up.
But that's not part of tonight's questions.
I know it's not, but it's, it just bothers me.
Let's turn the page here.
I just think it's terrible. The town is responsible for that, and they should have done it on their own instead of taking them to task for it. So, there you go. That's my little soapbox for today.
Okay.
Hmm.
Is this a public area?
Yeah.
It is.
So, are we done with this part of it, guys?
I think, I like, I'm back sort of on this easement real quick, just to, it's sort of, this is sort of new stuff. We didn't know all this.
All right, Nat, we got that.
So, I hate to say that, but I feel like this is all like brand new information, because nothing, not your fault at all. I'm just saying, like flushing this out. I like the, the pedestrian, I'm sort of thinking like behind Cumberland Farms, what we did for them. There's been a couple of other similar things that we did, other than Linda's point on Richmond.
Clay Street, Mayflower, all over the place.
Where it's sort of like a Nantucket thing. It isn't something you might do somewhere else that, it's, but it's a, it's going to be a benefit to have the ability to have a, you know, 10-foot bike path, walking path connecting this, it's going to be a community on the other side of this in five years. It's not going to be just trees, you know what I'm saying? So, I'm kind of, I, I think that, back to Leslie, Leslie, as usual, the bright light and she, just, just, I think we should do what she said with whatever it said she said. You know, with the easement and the, and the taking thing.
Can you remember what you said?
You know, I mean, whatever she said, that was, it ended up being the right thing.
So, has it under control over there?
I 100% agree with everything at the beginning, but I do now.
What do you say about the public's?
All right, we are disintegrating again.
So, that's good. I think that we need to look at it that way. Let them move on.
Okay. The burden is bitten us to death. Is there any public comment on this particular issue that we haven't already covered and he's, somebody's standing up?
Yes, this is right. Please.
David Buckley with Cohen &amp; Cohen. We represent Mass Medispa and while we're not.
What do you represent?
Mass Medispa.
What's that, nine?
It's another.
It's a, another.
Guys?
Dispensary?
Dispensary, yes.
Oh.
So, while we're not necessarily in opposition, we just wanted to highlight a couple concerns or issues that we had. I won't rehash what you've already discussed, but some of the current concerns related to congestion on Amelia Drive. If you look at the zoning bylaw for these facilities, it, you know, sets forth that they're standalone facilities. One of our concerns was the shared access and it makes it appear as if it's a, a multipurpose property instead of a single-use property, which the intent of the bylaw, we thought, was directed at. The next issue that we wanted to discuss was the dance studio across the street. I know it's not a licensed state care facility like in the bylaw, but having children there in a high-traffic area with kids and this kind of business has some concerns. And I know at one point, the, the Green Lady had suggested closing during the hours of operation for the dance studio. I don't know if that is still on the table or where you stand with that and, and that's what we got for you.
This is medical marijuana, correct? This isn't the retail component?
That's correct. This is a, this is a state licensed medical marijuana treatment center.
Which is a little different than the retail.
We don't expect the vehicular traffic to exceed what a dentist's office would.
And he was always packed.
They are individualized, there's a limit on the number of customers or patients who may be in the facility at any given time.
That's state law.
And it is one-on-one with respect to staff and patient. So, I think that the issues that my brother raises might be misplaced and the issue with respect to the dance studio has been addressed by our town at town meeting.
Okay. Anything else, Dave?
That's it, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else in the public like to speak to this issue? Okay. I believe Leslie has a good enough handle on it.
Okay, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? Any further discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what's your pleasure? I think we arrived at 10:00 AM to 9:00, 8:00 PM.
Eight.
Seven days a week, is that where we are?
What, what are we talking about, 20-foot easement?
Leave that up to Leslie and Michael.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to be that great.
Yeah.
I think it's a one-way.
Okay.
Whatever you work out between pedestrian, vehicular.
Okay. I think it should be both, or at least both on the table.
Yeah.
And that the easement should be whatever the width is of your current driveway easement that you share with.
Nine.
Nine, so you're half of that.
Half and half, yep. That way you're not carrying the whole burden of it.
Okay, I'll move to approve as indicated by Leslie's comments.
About the easement in Amelia Drive?
To incorporate her ideas.
Ten to 8:00 PM, seven days a week.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Okay. Yeah, in Amelia Drive, she's got it, said that.
Yeah, she got that.
Uh, any further discussion on that motion? Did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
All righty. Jim, Mr. Lyden, Mr. Santos. This is one of those, I can do a, I can do a traditional, it's, it's terrible plan, here's a better plan. Right?
I figured they were going to change this.
Yes. Thank you. For the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors, representing the applicant and property owner Jim and Nan Sliden. This is a piece of property located at 20 Evergreen Way, in which we have applied for a special permit under 139 Section 8, I believe E, which is the newly adopted rear lot bylaw. It's a plan that you've seen recently as we came in with a combined app, essentially two separate applications, but for two properties, 20 being the Lyden property, 22 being the Glowacki property.
Is that Greg's?
Yes.
Okay.
Greg's property. We came in with a, an AR subdivision, modified somewhat, if you will, a 20-foot wide right-of-way with the standard number of waivers that we typically ask for, for those type of modified ARs. That, both applications were approved under that scenario. Tonight, we're before you with a rear lot application special permit. Specifically first, we're talking about the Lyden property. This would be a 40,000-plus square foot lot, fronting on Evergreen Way. The rear lot would be a 20-foot accessway to the back lot here, both lots conforming to the requirements of the newly created rear lot bylaw. Currently, there exists on the property a primary dwelling, a secondary dwelling and a garage, which this board had approved as a tertiary dwelling, which Jim has not really converted the structure to a tertiary at this point, but that has been approved as a tertiary dwelling in this location here. As part of the provisions for the rear lot, there is a, a provision that we, we show a lotting plan. Now, while we did have the approved AR subdivision already in place, as I had mentioned, that had only a 20-foot wide right-of-way. This scenario here depicts a 40-foot wide right-of-way with a full turnout in this location here. All these lots, there'd be four lots here, all have the required area, frontage, meet the ground cover ratio and also have the required R factors.
Same and no more.
So, so that, so although we did have the AR previously, this is a complete lotting with a, with a full standard roadway.
How does the other plan, Paul, get around the regularity factor, the one that we want to approve?
You don't need it.
The long, narrow thing.
You do not need it.
Regularity goes out the window.
It goes out the window for the rear lot.
Okay.
Yes.
Because that's always going, that's been a problem for a lot of people.
Yep.
Okay, any questions from the board on this one?
Nope, it's good.
Okay. Keeping you up? Yeah. Okay. Anybody in the audience want to speak to this one? Okay, somebody make a motion?
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve 98-17.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. And I assume it's the same thing with Greg's?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
What's the good one look like?
That one?
But it's a public hearing, right?
It is.
Correct.
So, it's the same road, fits both, both ones for the draft, or for the layout.
Again, for the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors, representing the applicant, in this case, property owner and applicant Greg Glowacki. As, again, with the last application, this is a special permit request under 139E for a rear lot subdivision. This plan before you depicts the front lot and the rear lot. This site, again, houses a primary dwelling and a secondary dwelling that was part of a previous AR approval with a modified subdivision layout. Same lotting plan as the last application, 40-foot wide right-of-way, showing that you have four conforming lots within the, the two combined premises.
He's got a lot going on on that lot.
Oh, yes, he does.
Yes, he's going to clean that all up, isn't he?
I think we're going to have to.
Yes, he is.
And he's got an easement, this is actually an easement from Richmond here for the yard in the front, which is actually on part of the, what is now Richmond, was Walter's property previously.
Okay, any questions from the board on this one? Okay. Any questions in the audience? Somebody make a motion?
Make motion to close.
Joe seconded?
No, Barry seconded.
Barry seconded? No, actually Nat seconded.
Oh, sorry, that was Nat.
Fine.
So, John made the motion, Nat seconded to close the public hearing, let's fight over this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, somebody make a motion to approve?
I'll probably do it because they're.
Okay, Nat seconded? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And I would just like to say, I mean, this is a perfect situation on that rear lot where it.
It does work.
It just makes two lots without all the infrastructure and the easements and the homeowners associations and everything else.
And the airplane strip up the middle.
Thank you.
Okay. Tracy Cullinan, 16 Sleepy Hollow. Anybody here for that one?
I don't think anyone's here for that one, but that's.
Can you just cut to the, oh.
Super straightforward, pretty much a clarification from the prior permit.
We've been here already.
Which didn't specify which lot could have the tertiary dwelling, which is actually a secondary dwelling.
Okay.
And they want to have a new permit that says that's allowed on the market rate lot and we recommend approval.
Somebody want to, any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? Is this your lot?
No.
Go on up.
My name is George Horniac and I live.
You got to go right into the machine.
I live at 61 Somerset.
Catherine didn't get your name.
George Horniac.
Yep.
And myself.
Which one are you at?
61 I live at. It's almost across the street.
61 Somerset.
Somerset.
Yep.
I, and a couple of other neighbors have concerns about this and I, I think we should, I would like to see the site plan and I, we have concerns of the, well, I haven't, I hadn't seen that.
It's actually not a site plan. It's what they have.
We have concerns with the septic, we have concern about access and it is my understanding that the homeowners association at, whatever the.
Yeah, that area.
What's the street over there? Sleepy Hollow. They don't allow three dwellings on a half-acre lot, so.
Leslie?
I would like to sit down with your staff and, and a couple of other neighbors that aren't able to be here tonight to discuss this and to discuss our, our concerns over this whole development.
Madam Chairman, I have talked with the applicant about this, so I don't think it's that time-sensitive, so I'm sure we could continue it. But I did also talk with her attorney, because I also thought there may have been some kind of prohibition on a third dwelling. He's taking the position that there isn't, which those are private deed restrictions anyway, so they really don't have anything to do with the planning board or the town. Access would be limited to the Sleepy Hollow easement. It would not affect Lot Two or access onto Somerset Road. The planning board would review a site plan for just Lot One when a dwelling is proposed.
This is a covenant lot, isn't it?
It is. Lot One's the market rate, Lot Two's the covenant.
Yep.
And they're not specifically proposing a dwelling unit now, they just want their permit to reflect that they can apply for one in the future. So, maybe that provides some clarification, but again, it's, I don't think it's time-sensitive, so we can continue this to the January meeting.
And the septic's not before us. That would be something you'd have to get the Board of Health to sign off on. If they don't feel it's appropriate, they won't get their permit, so they have to do it before they even apply to a building permit.
Okay.
All right, does somebody?
Do you understand, George, that, that the, the proposed idea of a second dwelling, it's really a tertiary? It's in, in its application, because it's, the secondary dwelling is Lot Two's house. You following that? Hold this, hold this, it's all kind of flush out?
All right, Nat, they're going to discuss it in Steph.
All right.
Yeah, let's do that.
But then, but I, I just wanted, because he came here, I mean, he's been sitting there all this time, talking about.
Getting an education.
It's, it's, I just wanted to understand.
All right, so somebody want to make a motion to, anybody else want to talk to this? Somebody make a motion to continue this to January 8th?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
And go on in and talk to Leslie?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Okay, after, yes, sir. Thank you.
January 8th. Yep.
All righty, Redtail Lane subdivision, 154 Cliff Road. There's been a lot of comment about this.
Yeah, we need to.
Special permit first. Holly, Leslie, you, somebody want to explain this in a nutshell? I know Dan is here.
I vote for Dan.
I vote for Dan.
Dan Malloy, Site Design Engineering for the applicant. So, earlier this year, the board approved a two-lot definitive subdivision on this property, roughly cutting it in half north-south to the right of that tennis court into two lots. At the time of that approval, it was before town meeting, so it was before the rear lot provision was created. And there was discussion at that meeting that if the rear lot came through, that we should consider coming back to the board to pursue a rear lot in place of the definitive subdivision. So, here we are for a rear lot and it's obviously two applications, you have the special permit for the rear lot and because of the way this property is situated, it doesn't have any existing frontage, so it will still remain an AR approval required. So, it won't be some of the other ones you've seen where it's an A&R subdivision after the fact if the board should consider approving it. So, what you'll have, originally there was a long road along the northern property line that provided the frontage to two zoning compliant lots, again, prior to rear lot. So, now what we're coming in with, if you can see.
One dwelling per lot?
Yeah, that's, actually probably back, go back to the aerial, Holly, which mine? All right, if you can see in the, right up the top-left corner of the property, where the kind of circular driveway is right now in front of the house. So, we'll have to come in still with a small turnaround right at that driveway location to create 40 feet of frontage for each rear lot.
Right there, right?
Right, yes, where you can see, right where the big driveway is, exactly. So, there'll be a little turnaround created right there. That'll be surrounded by a new right-of-way to create the frontage for two rear lots. The proposed lot configuration is essentially the same as what you saw in the definitive plan. What we did is where there was a right-of-way in the northern property line, we just changed that to be part of one of the lots. So, the lot lines are almost identical, with the exception of this little right-of-way change. So, the lot densities are the same, there was two lots approved under the approval required, there's still two lots proposed here, so the density of the lot count has not changed. Two things we're asking the board to consider. One, there was a restriction on no secondary dwellings in the AR approval and there was also a restriction on the timing of construction. It was basically June, I think 15th, September 15th, roughly. So, I'd like to discuss those with the board, if there's any flexibility or leeway in either So I'd like to discuss those with the board, if there's any flexibility or leeway in either limiting those conditions, altering those conditions. I'd like to have that discussion. I know there's a lot of comments from butters, some with confusion as to what the project is, others with specific concern on those conditions. So I'd like to throw that out there, talk to the board about it, see what they think first about the rear lot, and then about the conditions if that's something you'll consider.
Are you on water and sewer?
Yes. I'm sorry, water and septic.
Because we argued about this one for quite a while, because it was so unusual with that really long tail coming in. And I'm not so quick to jump off the one dwelling unit per lot.
I couldn't make the last hearing, so I wasn't, I didn't hear a lot of the discussion that happened that created those conditions.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't an easy decision to, to make, first off, to get enough votes to actually approve it. There was quite a lot of concern about it. And the condition that only a single, one single dwelling on each lot was pretty, pretty hard and fast. There was no argument about that. The other thing you wanted to know, oh, the construction, the reason why we put those construction, exterior construction limits on it is because it being so in everybody's face and everybody's backyard, on something that people thought was never going to be developed any further. So those two, I don't care about the rest of it, but those two were pretty hard fought. So I don't know how the rest of the board's gonna feel about that. But that's the history of that, because you weren't here.
Madam Chair.
John.
Just a question for you, Dan. I think under the other approval, we had restrictions on the road, improvements on the road, also, I guess, not a turnaround, but a turnoff. So are you still planning on continuing with all the restrictions that we put, or improvements to the road, following through with that also?
There'll still be, Holly, keep it down.
There was a surface for sound instead of gravel. There was a couple of points that were made that were under the other approval that I think we should look back and make sure that if we're gonna consider this, those approvals should be met also.
Okay, I don't.
So what is it you specifically want to get relief from, as in that list of nine or 12, 13 conditions? The single family dwelling and the hour, and the time of construction, are those the two?
First off, the rear lot. We probably just want to pursue the rear lot, which is shrink the right of way.
Yeah.
And in terms of conditions in the approval, the only ones that we had asked to consider were the second dwelling and the time constriction.
Okay, so everything else stays in place? The turnoffs, the people can pass and everything?
Everything else stays in place, I don't, just, I have a copy here, I don't recall seeing specifics in there about, we still have to put a turnaround in.
Right.
I mean, if it's something we should need to do to accommodate, then we certainly can.
We had discussed a kind of a turnoff, so that you can allow another car to pass, because of the width, to make sure that you can do that. Also, I think a neighbor had shown, had appeared before the meeting with the gravel and the sound driving down there. So we discussed an alternative to that. Not necessarily paving, but there was a surface that we discussed that was more quiet than the.
Probably not a piece stone surface, but a clean gravel surface related to a clean stone, I think, would alleviate the sound issue.
We had approved, and the last one is still retained in this one.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Just, John, just, number nine is what you were talking about, but I don't see, just for staff and the board, the pull offs that I think John is referring to, because the length of the road, you can, kind of like I'm wigging, I mean, you can go down and there's a car width and a couple of car lengths long.
Right.
You can pull in to allow people to go by.
We can certainly put a little widening in someplace.
Yeah, that's what, somewhere.
In this case, at least, if we end up going ahead with the rear lot, we're also not creating that extended driveway or roadway further in the property, so we are shorting. But we can certainly put halfway up, just a little widening to allow passing, at least to pull over.
Already a neat decision.
I'm not against, I'm not against extra dwellings, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
Ground cover's ground cover, the way I look at it.
Well, they've got, they're oversized lots, big time. That's the one issue. And the second one is, do they have a preference? Dan, I hate, I know that you probably don't want to answer the question, but do they have a preference of what lot they really, I would assume Lot Two is the one that they really want.
Yeah, the vacant lot in the back would be the one they want to get.
Would they really want the sec, to be able to build out more?
Right.
And we limited it to 1,000 square feet.
That's what we asked if the board would consider.
Where did I read that?
That was a proposal we put in there, the board would consider either removing the condition or altering it, or maybe modifying in some way to some maximum square footage number, if there was a way to do that.
Because again, we're back to, the one lot's a little over an acre, and one of them's exactly an acre without the turning, being off the buildable land. So, and it's an R20. I mean, it's in R20, I mean, I, this is one of those ones that.
Did you see the list of waivers that we argued about the first time it came in? This was not a slam dunk.
No, no, I know that.
Or shoo-in, because you had to grant so many waivers in order for this to be buildable.
This was one of these odd, this is the Roy Barrett lot, isn't it?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
This was just like out in the middle of nowhere, kind of thing that happened years ago that was sort of there. It was a weird position to be in, no frontage on Oak Hill, or whatever it's called.
That's right.
If they had Hickory frontage, they, we wouldn't even be talking right now. It would have been four lots.
Barry?
Just refresh my memory, though. When we looked at the first lot, not this rear one, did we put any restrictions on tertiary?
Yes.
I don't, I'm not sure.
We didn't even talk about that.
What it says here is, I'm looking at it.
It says one dwelling per unit.
Single dwelling per lot, that's it.
Single dwelling per lot, okay, all right.
And there was no discussion about tertiary, I don't think, at all.
No, because we said, single dwelling per lot, period.
I don't think they're asking for that now, correct?
They're asking to not have a restriction.
You're acting, you're asking for full buildout.
We're asking for secondaries, not necessarily tertiarys now.
Correct, correct, okay.
Because they're on septic, it's not too far you're gonna go.
We're limited on capacity by bedroom counts, in terms of what will fit on the property. We're not restricted, we're not in any kind of overlay districts, so don't have a typical restriction out there.
How big is Lot Two again?
It's full, 40,000 square feet.
What is it?
It's over 40,000 square feet.
And how big is the other one?
They're each just over 40.
They're both restricted to four bed, five bedrooms with an IA system, right?
Uh, no, in this case, they're not.
Oh, you've got water.
There are no bedroom restrictions because there's town water. It's only what will physically fit on the property.
Anybody else have any questions at the moment? Steven?
Through you, Madam Chair. Dan, is, did you say there's a maximum that you're requesting for the second dwellings if they're approved?
Yeah. We asked for, basically modifying it to allow a maximum square footage of 1,000 square feet.
Thank you.
On the ground?
On the ground, gross square footage, depending.
Well, that's two different things.
As long as it's clear, I guess, is the question, because that's always a big.
Because 1,000 square feet is ground cover, and it can be a 20, a 2,000 square foot house.
1,000 square feet of ground cover would be fine, that'd be simple, clean, done. If that's something you will consider, rather than dealing with interior square footage and gross square footage and everything else, which can get messy.
Any other questions from the board right now? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this? I figured.
Yeah.
Come on up. You've been here before.
I'm John McGwin, I live at 152 Cliff Road. And maybe foolishly, but the folks at 150 and at 148 have consented to have me speak on their behalf here. I have a procedural question, first of all. In my response on December 4, I asked for the applicant's representatives to produce for me evidence of the 1974 easement that gives them the right to go 490 feet down and get the access to Cliff Road. I have not seen any evidence of that easement. And it seems that that's kind of important, since that's the only way that they can get in and out of that property, since for some reason, they can't get out to that Hickory lane because of, it's private. I never understood.
They have no access rights there.
I, I was told that quite succinctly the last time I was here, 10 months ago. So I still don't have that information. I think it's relevant to the approval of this board.
How do you feel about their request to be allowed to have more than one dwelling per lot and remove the restriction on the construction during summer?
Well, some people here might remember that I was here 10 months ago. I made those same points, and I really could not believe that I came back here 10 months later, and I have to reargue the same things, because they want to undo what the board did 10 months ago. But there's another, there's another issue which the Caulfield family, Mr. and Mrs. Caulfield, asked me to bring up. It's a pretty much of a separate issue, and that is that there appears to them to be a road that runs right past their backyard, within 10 feet of their backyard, as a matter of fact. And they don't understand why that road has to be there, when it could as easily go from the north area down to the south area and be a road that parallels Hickory Lane. Hickory, whatever it's called, Hickory Dickorys.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, if we go to the rear lot, Leslie, that takes that road that runs behind their property, which came up the last time, out of the equation, because they're all feeding off the little cul-de-sac with some sort of an easement? Or am I mistaken on that one?
I think Dan would be the better person to respond to that, because they would clearly need to drive to the buildable area in Lot Two.
Holly wants the pointer. All right, go for it, Dan.
Okay, so what you're going to see, so right in here is where the driveway turnaround will be.
Yep.
And this is the 20-foot access to this back lot here. So the driveway for this lot would come right down the 20-foot access, and that's the same location, same location that was approved under the AR for the road, except now it'll be a driveway versus a road.
Without that big turn circle.
And the difference between the road previously and the driveway is how many feet?
The right of ways, well, I should say, the right of way in the AR was 20 feet wide, this is 20 feet wide. The property itself has not changed. The AR required a 12-foot driveway, I forget the exact numbers, it's probably one or two foot shoulders, so probably a 14 to 16-foot width. The driveway will be meandering 10 to 12 feet to get back.
So that really hasn't changed?
The location has not changed. The impact will go down, but there will still be a driveway.
It won't be a road anymore, it'll be just a driveway.
A driveway and a road, what is the difference when it goes right into your backyard?
A road could be cut much wider, a driveway could be a lot smaller, and doesn't have to meet all the grading issues or any of that stuff. Because a road has to meet certain grading requirements, certain width requirements, certain shoulder requirements. A driveway, which is what it's going to be now, can be 12 feet wide and meander down the way and not be like a road quality. So it's, it's got different characteristics than an actual road. So it's not going to be as impact on their property as the previous approval. It's actually gonna lessen the impact.
No, do you understand what she said, John? I'll say it a different way.
I think I, I look at it and I see 20-foot going right by their.
Well, that's, that's part of the lot, that's just 20 feet of lot. That's not the road, it's not 20 feet of road. That's just part of their lot in order to get the frontage up on the cul-de-sac. That's just part of the lot. That is not a 20-foot wide road anymore. It's just part of the, it's just a driveway coming up there.
It's gonna be 10 foot, Dan?
Yeah.
It'll be 10 to 12 feet, just be a, it'll be a meandering driveway.
Just be a 12-foot wide driveway.
See, for them to create the frontage, to actually subdivide those lots, that big lot into two, with a regular subdivision plan, they have to put that in. Under this new bylaw, you can kind of keep it looking like 1974, without all kinds of stuff. That's, that's what this is doing. It's gonna keep it looking pretty much what it looks like now, except for the buildings. But as far as what it looks like getting in, it's gonna, you know, look pretty much the same.
Dirt or a shell driveway, not a road.
They don't have to create frontage now.
I think I, I understand all of that. I think the Caulfield position was, why can't all of this driveway, which you call it.
Go out into Oak Hollow.
Go down from north to south, and then go east.
Saying to flip the whole thing.
Oh.
Just to flip it, flip it upside down.
Yeah.
Because they'd have to come down Redtail another 200 or 300 feet to get to access to it.
Oh, you're saying.
So that's not something that we're necessarily gonna be jumping up and down about. And there may be some wetlands involved at that point. There may be some wetlands involved. Dan, any comment on that one?
I'm just gonna try to highlight what I think is being asked for, so coming down and across.
Yes.
Let him talk.
If we came down and across, would have to build, you know, twice as much roadway to get there, but it also would have to create a property line down through here, which would do, at that point, two things. One would have a zoning violation and the house setback here. We couldn't, we can't fit a new property through here and still provide a setback to that house. We're also attempting to leave the tennis court in place, which would also force us to cut that off. So it.
Couldn't we put the driveway?
No.
I wasn't done yet. 20 feet off and use an easement. We do it all the time, we do it all the time, and the approval not required.
It'll run right next to the house.
I don't know, another 20 feet. That's a good idea.
I think that's going beyond what we can do. We're impacting the other piece of property.
The rear lot is a special permit, though.
Run with it. And we've already approved this driveway where it is.
Leslie wants to speak.
Leslie wants to speak, knock yourself out.
Oh, she's at January.
Well, I'd just like to remind the board that when this was approved, first, I think, there was a preliminary plan. There was a lot of discussion about whether or not the board should allow any division of this lot, because the access is over an easement shown on a 1970 something plan.
74.
And the board ultimately decided to allow it with the limitation of one dwelling unit per lot, because that was consistent with the density that would have been allowed anyway with a primary dwelling and a secondary dwelling. And I specifically remember this, a butter coming to the hearing and raising the same concerns that he's raising today. And, you know, maybe the rear lot subdivision is a better option than the other plan that was approved with the slightly wider road instead of a driveway. But I think the same conditions are still there relative to whether or not you should or shouldn't allow extra dwellings, whether or not you should or shouldn't allow construction during the summer months. I mean, nothing's changed with that, in my mind. It's really just, is this a better plan or not than what was approved before?
I think it's, firstly, I think it's a better plan. I'm still struggling with the one dwelling unit per lot and the prohibition on summer exterior construction.
It would be allowed three lot, three dwellings. It would be allowed a tertiary if it was one lot.
Correct.
Yeah, so one lot could have two dwellings, and one lot could have one dwelling, how about that's the baby?
Hold on.
Technically, the board would review the plan for adequate access before you approve the primary, the secondary, and the tertiary. So you would have to decide whether or not the access from Cliff Road to the property was adequate for all of those dwellings. So that's something that you would need to determine before, you know, they're just, they're not just automatically required.
Steve had his hand up for a while. Steve?
So just to segue off of that, through you, Madam Chair, two points of clarification, please. The, the driveway as opposed to a roadway on the lot itself will be 12 feet versus 20 feet? So it will be less of an impact on the lot, clearly, if it is, if it were approved?
Now, there's a lot of improvements on the roadway that this doesn't have to do for a driveway.
Yeah, and maybe, yeah, maybe we could pull up the width. I don't remember what the width was of the roadway that was within the 20 feet before.
It was still about a two foot with a two foot on each side.
So it was a 20-foot wide layout?
It would have been a 12, it would have been at least a 12-foot wide road with some type of a shoulder.
Two and two, now they don't have to do that.
At a minimum, it would have been 14 feet.
And it would have provided access to the two lots, whereas now it's only providing access to the one in the back.
So I guess the question is, is it less of a visual impact? I mean, I know you can't see this from anywhere, but if you were in a butter, but what's being proposed now versus what was approved previously? Is what's being proposed now less of an impact or more of an impact?
Less of an impact.
Okay, so.
Unless, of course, where you position it. Because if you have a 20-wide swatch of land, and you start the driveway right on the property line and go 12 feet, it has no effect on the butter.
Sure.
They're still going to have to look at that driveway. If you start eight feet in and then go 12 feet, then at least there's an eight-foot buffer that separates the butter. So it does have.
The way to get around that is to have the driveway run on the southerly line of the 20 feet. So it's not banged up against the back of the Caulfields, where the 12 feet starts at the Caulfield's property line. You started at the southern part of that 20-foot. So it's got eight feet of undisturbed between it and the back of the Caulfield. So any driveway coming in from that access, 12 feet wide, is on the very southern end of that 20-foot that takes it back to that lot. Does that make sense? Yeah. Yeah, so it's on the southern side of that 20 feet, not banged up right behind the Caulfields.
So the other point of clarification is. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to be clear, we were talking about road improvements earlier, and my understanding was that those were with, with respect to the Redtail, which is the section of dirt from Cliff Road to the lot.
Going north.
Right, so that was the area that's required to be improved with a pull off. Is that correct or incorrect?
It's supposed to have a pull off, so you go up the road here.
There'll be a little pull off right here, and we still have to improve. This, this is the access road, this has to be regraded and improved all the way down.
With a pull off.
With a turnaround right here.
So cars can pass.
Somewhere in here.
You know, Dan was saying clarity, and I just wanted to be clear, because I understood too, what was what. Thank you.
Okay. I have no idea where we're going anymore.
So I guess the only notable difference would be with, if, under the one lot, you would get three dwellings, one being a tertiary, with a restriction of 650 square feet for the size. Right now, what you're proposing to have one of the lots, the back lot, with a second dwelling of 1,000 feet, so you're actually gaining another 350 square feet on the ground. Is that correct?
No, and I gain, right now, the current approval. No, we're not gaining, right now, the current approval, the current approval says one dwelling per lot.
Period.
Period. So we're just asking, if the board would consider allowing a secondary dwelling up to 1,000 square feet.
On each lot.
On each lot. We're not looking for tertiaries. We're not going there.
So they want two dwelling units per lot instead of restricted to one dwelling unit per lot. Forget the square footage at the moment. Barry?
Yeah. So can we go back to the plan you had up there a second ago? I'm just going to throw off two thoughts here for you. Where this property line is right now, up here, right there, yep. Any chance about moving the driveway up to that? And that gives them almost about a 20-some-odd-foot buffer. So in other words, run the driveway, this 12 feet, run the driveway down this way. Okay? It's a driveway. Let's be serious.
Well, they are running it down.
I thought they were running it up through here.
The driveway right now, so this lot will be accessed by a driveway right through here.
Right through there. Can you come down here onto this property?
In Lot 1? That's what I said.
Yeah.
Pull the driveway down a little bit?
Pull the driveway down. That gives them 20 feet worth of buffer space.
That's a good idea, Barry.
All right, so that's the first thing. Second thing is that this rear lot has been the biggest bone of contention behind everything. So if that first lot were available to be developed, you could have a primary, secondary, tertiary. So how about if we allow, let's do the wisdom of Solomon here, how about if we allow that rear lot just to have one dwelling, have the front lot, which will impact a heck of a lot of things less, to have a primary and secondary, secondary being no larger than 1,000?
Actually, it's the other way around. Because it's the other way around.
Lot 1 closest to the roadways.
That is the one that should have only the one dwelling. It's got a larger dwelling and it's right behind the Caulfields. The other one is not behind anybody. There's a lot of space. Look at the, here.
Yeah, I know. There's a lot of space.
See this? There are two in the back lot and one in the front lot.
Just, all right, so I'm just saying to you, again, a little wisdom of Solomon here ultimately.
I said that a minute ago. Split the baby. Two and one.
Yeah, split the baby.
And that's a big a lot. Along with the one dwelling house is a big a lot, Barry.
Yeah, that's okay. All right.
He said Solomon.
If you want it from one layman, I don't understand anything that's going on here right now.
Well, we're trying to help you, actually.
I know you are. I just don't understand how. I have to report back to 148 and 150, what's going on here tonight?
We're trying to get somewhere that makes sense.
Yeah.
And that will benefit everybody while still maintaining the spirit of the original decision. But being reasonable about what they're asking for, so not giving them everything they want. I'm not willing to release them on the summer construction issue.
Fair and well.
Where they're going to have, there's no exterior construction between June 15th and September 15th.
It's fine.
And move the driveway easement on to the other lot and only allow the one with a house on it to have the single dwelling and the one on the one that's way away from everybody else towards, you know, towards Crooked, to have two dwelling units, one capped at 1,000 square feet on ground cover. So it's sort of a piece of what they're asking for, but not everything they're asking for.
It's almost exactly the same. It's hardly changed.
And I would consider the 1,000 on the second lot as well, but I agree with everything you're saying.
One lot, one on the first lot.
No, I know.
Two on the second lot with a secondary dwelling being limited to 1,000 square feet of ground cover.
All right, let's do this.
Second dwelling, whatever it is.
Does that, help explain that, John?
And the driveway would move way away from them. Way away from themselves. Driveway would move south.
The lot with the tennis court, sir?
Yes.
Have just that one house or a bigger house or whatever they want to do, but they can only have one dwelling on it.
That's the lot that's closest.
That's to Redtail.
To Redtail.
They'd be allowed to have two on this lot.
But the other lot will be able to have two.
One would be limited to a secondary dwelling.
Two complete dwellings?
Yes. But one would be limited to 1,000 square feet on the ground. They're entitled to three now if they didn't subdivide.
They have a lot of land there.
We'd put two here and one there, so there's still only three dwellings back there total. If they never subdivided, never activated the special permit to some extent, they're allowed three under the current bylaw. We're taking that and allowing one that's already there and two back here. And the driveway would move south away from the back of the other properties.
How far away from the back of the other property?
20 feet.
20 feet?
20 feet.
So the easement would be on the other lot. It'd be below the property line.
Yeah.
Yes.
An easement parallel to the Redtail.
And they can run both driveways off that easement.
We got a different.
We are.
They get both driveways coming off the same easement now.
The other thing is...
Guys, one conversation. The microphones pick up everybody talking.
Like, this, all this whole area is unusual, unique. So we, you know, personally, as one person, I feel like we can't totally say no to this unique issue when one of your neighbors is going to come in someday with a unique issue with all this land in half acres of zoning, okay? So it's, this is, this is good, but we haven't voted on yet. But what we're talking about is a really good deal for everyone, for you guys. Okay?
Well, as I said, you know, I've made the pitch the last time for one dwelling on each of the two properties.
Yeah.
I thought that was going to be the way we would come out because I've vented, and I think my neighbors have also vented on the problems that we are seeing with congested construction in this area. It's going, it's become rampant. And if I haven't, you know, explained that to the board, and I think I have on more than one occasion, I think you have the sense of it, that we are sick and tired of listening to earth-moving equipment, listening to banging, listening to stone walls going up that are totally, and I understand this is not within your belly, it's HDC, but you should know of the frustration of the butters when you make these decisions.
Don't.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't hear a lot of support for lifting that condition of exterior construction in the summer.
No, I think that's...
I think we should keep that. Because that's what's going to drive you nuts.
What was the date?
Let's see here. Well, I think the other conditions need to sort of stay in place, don't they? Leslie?
Yeah, I think particularly the road that John mentioned, that should definitely be part of it because the road that it is right now, it's a dirt road, which is fine. We don't want paved road or anything like that. But we would like something that would keep down the dirt from ascending into my, you know, house, which I have to keep the west windows closed at all times because of the dirt that's coming in.
We had talked about stabilized. I forget what the term was we used the last time.
Number nine.
What did it say up there?
Stabilized graded in.
Where is it?
Yeah, but she was talking about stabilized graded in. And the road is number nine and the dust is number seven. But the pull-off is still, I don't see a pull-off anywhere in it.
Yeah, we're going to have to add that pull-off thing.
And is it a pull-off or multiple pull-offs? That was one of my questions.
Well, probably one coming in and probably one going up. So you don't have to cross over a pull-off. So just, you know, one here like they do in Ireland. You got one here, you got one...
Well, they already have, kind of have one.
Either one in the middle or one near the beginning on one side, one near the bottom end.
There's already one there naturally.
One's developed in the beginning.
So one in each direction, is what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Including the one that's theirs, it could be counted.
No, don't bother with that, please.
Something we have not been doing is getting our contributions in, is that we were supposed to get.
We don't always get contributions when the bike path is already there.
Joe, but this is different. We're already restricting them, Joe.
Yeah, and the bike path is already there.
In this particular case, I don't see it the same way on this one.
You can't impose something that no representative's doing.
Totally different than any other one.
We didn't do it the first time. We can't do it now.
This is a new application, Linda.
Do I?
No.
They're not asking for a marijuana place here, so.
Maybe the applicant's representative wants to just volunteer something.
No.
I don't see, I see this as a different thing. Sorry.
No, just two pull-offs. One going up, one coming down.
I take it from the silence of the board and the silence of the applicant that I'm not going to get to see a copy of the easement that was done in 1974.
I'm happy to provide.
Do you have any comment about that?
I'm happy to provide a copy. I don't have one with me now. If I did, I would certainly provide it.
I asked for it in my letter of the fourth, which I sent a copy to the...
There is one?
I believe this came up.
There absolutely is an easement. I have read it. There's an easement coming up.
I'm sure there is an easement.
I can certainly email and mail a copy. That's not a problem.
All right, you're going to have to get it to the board, and then Leslie, you can email it to John, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so can we just go over the conditions real quick?
Yeah.
So we'll keep the summer construction prohibition.
Yeah.
That the driveway servicing Lot 2 will be 10 to 12 feet in width and will be located along the northern lot line of Lot 1. So that maintains the 20 feet.
And they can both use that to access the property. There's no reason why we have to have two going in there. They both use the same easement to access their lot.
That's an option. So we'll include something about easement language for the driveway. Now, did I hear someone say something about maintaining a 20-foot buffer all the way across the top of Lot 2?
No, it's just take the driveway out of there.
Barry said that.
No, just by pulling it in.
Okay, so just relative to the driveway, not structures.
When you pull it into the other, when you pull it into Lot 1, all of a sudden, you're gaining that 20-foot buffer.
But that was just for the driveway, not for structures.
Correct, correct.
They can't build there anyway. They'd have a negative building mass.
Pull, so two pull-offs on Redtail, one in each direction, wherever those are.
Yeah.
Lot 1 will be limited to one dwelling unit. Lot 2, limited to two dwelling units. The secondary unit shall not be more than 1,000 square feet in ground cover.
Yeah.
That's it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The contribution.
We just do it the first time.
Joe, they're not getting any gifts here.
Can I just ask you?
We can't be restrictive on that.
Respectfully, what is the contribution you're looking for? Because it's a rational...
For what?
$2,000 a dwelling.
No.
So they can only, so they only have to donate 2,000 because they already got two dwellings on the property?
No, they give two a year, the 4,000.
They're there. Can see them.
Can I just finish my question?
Yeah, go ahead.
To one, to one end thereof.
What floor?
What's the dedication to?
To offset...
Yeah, but you have to...
We can't do that.
$100,000 they save.
No, no, what if they...
No, you cannot legally do that. It has to be dedicated for the bike path, for this, for whatever, and we're not doing that. We already have a bike path that's three miles long.
That's my question. There's got to be a rational nexus to...
Well, I'm not going to win the second round.
No, you're not.
Save the bike path maintenance fund.
No, you can't.
$100,000 a year.
We have, in the past, where there's already existing pedestrian facilities, asked the applicant to contribute $2,000 for each new dwelling unit towards ongoing maintenance or other amenities like water fountains or dog fountains or whatever along the path.
My problem is, we did not do it the first time when we gave them the AR. It's the same thing. They're just modifying it to go under the new bylaw. I am not about to say now after the fact, oh, sorry, give us the money.
They did just add another second dwelling.
Yeah.
That isn't, so it isn't the same application.
Yes, it's the same application.
Right, but it's the same subdivision.
I'm just clarifying.
It's the same piece of property.
We don't usually do that for secondary.
Can I get a point of clarification?
Barry, go for it.
You know what? I, that's fine. You don't have to do it. This is what, okay. But this is why I wanted to hear from Joe, to see what his thought is. Thank you, Leslie, for expanding that thought out.
You're welcome.
Because I think that that's, that's appropriate. So I really do support where you're coming from, and sorry that we've missed the boat on a few others, but okay. Here we are. So I'm inclined to agree with you on that one.
Point of clarification?
Hi.
Stephen?
So not that I disagree with Joe's point, to be something good to institute and then do it religiously, but I do want to get clarified. They are responsible to maintain Redtail improvements. Is that correct?
Yes, because it's the only access to the property and it's private.
I just want to point that out because there's an ongoing cost involved in that, that's all.
Yeah. 400 and some odd feet of it.
I mean, again, this is so unique. This is like Little Beach Road driveway back in the day when we were arguing about widening it.
Okay, let's stick to the point. John, did you have one more?
And finally, could I ask Holly to, with a pointer, show where the driveway is that is being talked about here?
It's...
You see the property line right there?
Shh, let her do her thing.
I think he means...
And where does it go to?
Below that long line. You see the 20 feet of drive, see the 20 feet of property that they have to get to their property? It's actually on the other lot below the 20 feet. So it's no longer right behind them. It's actually on the other lot by easement to get to the back lot.
Exactly.
So that 20 feet of long tail, not disturbed for a driveway.
That's the buffer, okay.
Yeah. So we've moved the whole driveway to the other lot. They can share the driveway down there, but it's moved to the whole lot.
It's going to be lower than...
It's going to be further away from the people at 150.
Okay.
I mean, that's, should be the, that's your report.
That's my report. Thank you.
That's all I need.
It's away from them.
Somebody tell me it's plain English.
All right, all right, all right. Let's bring it back in here. Where? No, she's with him.
Oh, she is? Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
They're together. Um, okay, so where are we on this contribution, which I'm absolutely opposed to because I'm just absolutely opposed to it?
It's up to John to be on board.
Otherwise, otherwise there aren't going to be four votes.
No pressure. This is, I, you know, I don't, it's getting late and I'm starving, but I just wanted to say, every night I come here, it's like that. All right, so I don't, I just don't, Joe, I get it. I used to ask for money for the bike path thing at the beginning of my term, first term. We talked about that all the time. We kind of meandered away from it and depending upon what the situation is, waivers, et cetera. I look at this, if this was clean dirt, nothing was here, and we were doing the real lot subdivision, and they didn't have to put a 40-foot road in and all kinds of crazy stuff, they'd be paying for the whole Main Street, the whole downtown sidewalk plan, in my opinion. But in this particular case, the existing conditions change the way I feel about it in this particular special permit. I'm just saying. I know what you're thinking. You're thinking, you know, millionaires can pay this. It's plenty of money. I don't think that way with all this. I look at them all the same.
I would ask poor people to pay it too.
Oh, okay.
No, I can't, let's not go there, please. That's inappropriate.
I see, I see it. I see.
Since I think I'm the swing vote here, I just want to say I'm not going to vote for it. And the reason why is, I would agree with you normally, Joe, but the 400-foot road entrance coming here that Stephen made reference to is going to require maintenance that's going to be far exceeding $2,000. And I think the owner is going to be burdened with that. So for that reason, I'm going to vote against that $2,000 for this particular case.
All right, so...
Yeah, yeah, take it off.
Are we closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
If there's no further...
No further comment?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, Barry's made a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion would be as Leslie just laid it out. No summer construction, turnoffs, driveway moving down by easement. Both properties can use that easement.
Condition nine, the dust thing.
The dust, all that stays.
The dust, all that stays.
Okay.
All that stays.
Okay.
We're not changing anything else.
Right.
Okay, is there anything else, Leslie?
Yes.
1,000 square foot on the secondary dwelling?
Also, I think we're going to get the, the easement from 1974.
Yeah, but there's nothing to do with this, nothing to do with this.
That's staff.
Maybe Dan could get this gentleman's email though, or Dan could.
Yeah, they can send it to staff.
Senator's staff.
Okay, we send it to staff, not, not that. Okay, so is that your motion, Nat?
Yes, and, yep, and the 20-foot.
We got that already.
We got it already. We got it.
Is there a second to Nat's motion?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did we close the public hearing?
Yes, we did.
We already voted on that?
Yep.
Lost track of that one. Okay, so that was the motion, we passed it, right? Yes. Okay, thank you very much. We'll get that, we'll get that through staff and get it out to you.
The modification. Yeah.
Somebody want to make that motion? Oh, we have to have a public hearing?
Yeah, just call it.
Are there any comments on this one?
Nope.
Conditions, Leslie, track or whatever we need to do between the two of them? Yes. Okay, any comments from the board? No. Any comments from the public on that one?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve somebody?
Motion to approve, but the changes as we've submitted, consistent with.
Is that your second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are supposed to approve the schedule, which the staff has worked diligently on, covering all these weird Monday holidays.
Motion to approve the schedules.
You understand that Veterans Day holiday is on a Monday next year?
It is?
Yes.
Well, that's good, finally.
It did.
Thursday, okay, because two months in a row, we go to a Thursday. Okay. November, okay. Barry's made a motion, Nat, John, we're not done here. Barry made a motion, Jerry made, Barry made a motion to approve the schedule. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that they can post it.
And it was also included in the package.
Yeah.
Yes.
Pretty much the same as every year, except we have a bunch of Monday holidays. Okay, anything else anybody wants to bring up? Weren't we supposed to do planning board, I mean zoning board? They asked for something.
ATM.
Somebody asked to support Julie Fitzgerald's application that no relief is necessary. She emailed you this afternoon.
Well, I was extremely busy this afternoon, and I did not read her email, so I'm not prepared to talk about that.
Because it's coming up on Thursday, and it shouldn't be at the ZBA at all. And they asked for our support, that no relief was necessary.
That would be an item not anticipated by the chairman 48 hours in advance, which isn't on the agenda at all.
Then I'll leave it up to you to take care of it.
Okay, I will look into that, but we do have as an agenda item, a quick run-through of zoning articles, and I can put those in a tiny little nutshell if you just want to hear about them very, very quickly.
Please.
Okay. So, we really only have two bylaw amendment articles, the usual technical amendments, which we will keep to just technicalities. And we are working on a larger technical corrections, Article Four Sections 25 through 32, and those are really just making changes for consistency. For example, in the bylaw section that talks about building permits, it's just organized in a confusing kind of way. It's hard to read, so we want to sort of reorganize that a little bit. And it talks about the local inspector, the inspector of buildings, the building commissioner, so we want to streamline that a little bit. So we're working on that. Then the rest of our zoning articles are mostly geared towards the phase-out of RC and some RC too. We have one technical amendment map change, CN to CTEC for the Coca-Cola property on Dav Kim. When that was put into CN, we were debating CN or CTEC, it went to CN. Now the new owner wants it to be in CTEC, it about CTEC. Country overlay district corrections to town overlay district, where they're already in a town zoning district, so those would match up. We have an R1 phase-out on the Mid Island that would go from either CN to CMI at Pleasant and Cherry Streets. There's only maybe eight properties included in that. R20 to CN at One Airport Road that is in conjunction with the right-of-way situation that we talked about earlier of the Macy's Lane Airport Road, Old South Road intersection. RC to CDT Harbor Square, so that would be setting the framework for that project as well as phasing out RC in the downtown. That's a key piece to removing that district. RC to R5 on Williams Lane and Sparks Avenue. These are commercial properties that are clearly in a residential use. RC to ROH on Orange Street, that's in the vicinity of Marine Home Center and Hatches. It's across the street. Those are residential properties now. Some SOH to Village Neighborhood in Sconset. When the Village Neighborhood District was originally proposed, it was a little more expanded from what it is now. Some of those property owners didn't want to be included now that they better understand the Village Neighborhood concept. They want to be added to that commercial district. So that's, I mean, there may be a few other minor things that come up. But we all have a lot going on, we had the special town meeting. We thought we would lighten it up this time.
Nothing in Quiddit yet?
Nothing in Quiddit yet, no.
At some point, we're gonna have to deal with that.
We have to fix that at some point.
And, and we did have, in the citizen petitions, I think there are three.